Good evening, everyone. Welcome. My name is Mona Davids. I am a founding member of the New York City School Safety Coalition. I want to say thank you to our parents as well as our panelists for joining us here this evening to discuss and address the current school safety crisis that we are having here in New York City. I know it's a school night, so we want to get this town hall started. So what we're going to do is we're going to do a quick one-minute introductions from each of our panelists. And then after the introductions, our first guest speaker will be Chief Marlon Larrin, who is the head of the NYPD School Safety Division. And then he will be followed by Mr. Aaron Barnett from the Department of Education. It's very fluid. This is very informal. And again, I just want to say thank you so very much to our elected officials, to the Department of Education, NYPD, and of course, you know, our retirees, parent leaders for all of the work that you're doing. So with that said, we'll start the one-minute introduction, starting with Chief Larrin.
Evening, everybody. Marlon Larrin, School Safety Division.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Aaron Barnett. I am the Deputy Director, excuse me, Deputy Executive Director of the Office of Safety and Prevention Partnerships, New York City Public Schools. Pleasure to be here.
Thank you. Assemblymember Riley?
Hi, I'm Mike Riley. I represent the 62nd Assembly District, which is the South Shore of Staten Island.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Welsh.
Good evening, everyone. I'm the commanding officer of the Outreach Unit in the School Safety Division.
Okay, thank you, C.L. Welsh. Continuing, Councilmember Riley?
Evening, everyone. It's Councilmember Riley from the Northeast Bronx in the 12th District.
Okay, Robin, my fellow parents.
Hi, my name is Robin Kellinger. I am a parent of three children. District two, I'm also on the CEC District two. And I am co-chair of the Safety Committee on District two, CEC.
Thank you. Elisa?
Hi, good evening. My name is Elisa O'Shea. I'm a Queens resident and the Queens rep for the citywide council on high schools. I live in Rockaway on the peninsula, and previously I represented the Borough President of Queens on CEC 27 for a couple of years. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. I see that we are also joined by Councilmember Bob Holden. Councilmember Holden, we're just doing a quick one-minute introductions. If you're ready to go on camera and introduce yourself.
Hey, Mona, this is actually Daniel Crazina, Chief of Staff, the Councilmember. He's wrapping up another Zoom right now. You should be on in like two minutes. Just wanted to flag that with you. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. And I see our fellow parent leader from Staten Island, Jimmy. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
How are you? Thank you, Mona. I appreciate it. My name is Jimmy DiCiderato. I am the PTA President of IS 72 and PS 60 on Staten Island. I'm also the Vice President of District 31, CEC. I am here in the capacity of myself as a parent, not representing the CEC. But Mona, thank you for all your hard work. You always do. It's always great to get these meetings together. So thank you for your, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for being here.
No, thank you. Thank you very much for joining us again. So we are going to get started. I see, excuse me, I see Councilmember Vicky Palladino has logged on. Councilmember Palladino, would you introduce yourself or if it's a representative? Could you please introduce yourself?
Hi, my name is Ally Zarachi. I'm the Councilmember's Deputy Chief of Staff. And I'm going to be joining this meeting tonight on her behalf. Unfortunately, she had another meeting she had to attend, and this is really important to her, this topic. So I am present and I am listening, and if I am able to, I will say a few words when the time is right.
Okay, thank you, Ally. Thank you. So we will get started with Chief Larrin. I call Chief Larrin all the time with, you know, with questions, with requests. So I know that I'm preaching to the choir when it comes to Chief Larrin. But Chief Larrin, just for parents to understand, where are we with regards to the number of school safety agents in our schools? Where are we with regards to the number of weapons confiscated so far this year, the number of firearms? And then, you know, also another concern, and I learned this today from Jimmy. So Jimmy, I'm sorry, I'm jumping in before you bring it up. But, you know, a school like Tottenville only has four school safety agents, and they're supposed to have at least 14. Not to mention our schools with only one school safety agent. So Chief Larrin, if you could please tell us what's going on, where we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davids. Good evening to you, to members of the panel, parents, stakeholders, and also to my school safety agents. I know a lot of you log on to these calls just to stay current on everything that's going on. So for those of you that are on, I just wanted you to know and hear from me that I appreciate all of the work that you do day in and day out and putting yourselves out there for the city's young people. It does not go unnoticed. So I will start with the personnel numbers, Ms. Davids. And the attrition, we are having a difficult time keeping up with it. So the budgeted headcount for school safety agents, this includes level ones and level threes, which are the frontline supervisors, is 4,513.
Need to plug.
What we have actually in play, actual persons on the payroll, is 4,157. So that's a deficiency of 356. The issue with our numbers is that that 4,157 does not translate to actual boots on the ground because there are eventualities with our agents where they are on extended leave, non-pay status, disciplinary reasons, vaccination pending, assigned somewhere else. So what's really out there on a daily basis is 3,256. So that number is almost 1,000 less of what is actually attributed to our personnel count. So 3,256 agents spread out through 1,400 buildings. That doesn't translate to very much. So that's why unfortunately you're seeing those low numbers in these mega campuses. And unfortunately, our elementary schools have single agents, which naturally is not something that we want to see. Part of the reason why we're here is because during the pandemic, the hirings were not taking place. The division itself, it was not clear if it was going to continue under the auspices of the Police Department or if it's going to be transferred to the Department of Education. The vaccination, as I mentioned earlier, we saw a lot of agents leave during that time, unfortunately. And there wasn't, there weren't any measures or steps being taken to keep up with that attrition. That's something that we're seeing department-wide, not just with agents, but with police officers. I'm sure you've seen that in the media. However, I can tell you that the city is putting out exams for the agents. The Candidate Assessment Division is going through the process of screening candidates. There is a class in the Police Academy right now of 128. They're slated to graduate on January 6 of 2023. And there will be a hire on December 14 of 250 agents. Now, will those 300-plus agents immediately solve the ills that we're experiencing right now? Not immediately, but we will be able to deploy them in the places where we're seeing the spikes in crime, where we need to supplement these schools, where we used to have double-digit numbers for the agents. But the issue is just that, getting the qualified candidates to come in through the door. Unfortunately, the pay for the agents, it could be better. That's a conversation that I've had with the union and with my own leadership. So that's being looked at. For those of you that don't know, top pay for school safety agents, it takes seven years to reach top pay. And living in the city, it's not easy to make ends meet when top pay is about $52,000. I mean, yes, the agents can do overtime, but they shouldn't have to, in my opinion. But we're doing our very best to retain the talent that we have to work with them and to really try to promote job satisfaction and to support each other. What we implemented to help with these gaps is we mirrored a strategy that Patrol put in place, which is enhanced deployment. Patrol has been putting out police officers that work in administrative assignments to cover hotspots. So all of the boroughs have been doing that. Ourselves here at the central building, central headquarters, we're doing that as well, where we're rotating agents and sending them out to schools that have that need. So all of the agents are being put in play. None of them are comfortable. We're using all of them. We're using the community outreach agents, the agents that pick up the calls from the field, and the ones that do unannounced scanning. I mean, they're out there every day as it is, our motor pool agents. So we're trying everything that we can just to keep up with that. And I had a meeting yesterday at Queens Borough President Office with superintendents. And, you know, as much as I would love to cover the entire city and saturate them with an army of agents, we can't at this time, but what we can do is be mindful and vigilant of events that are coming up. If there's something that needs special attention, we just did it the other night. The DOE had an event at the Barclay Center, and there weren't enough agents to cover that dismissal at 6:00 PM. So we brought in agents from the entire city, from Manhattan, from the Bronx, from Queens. So we can do that with a particular school or an event, or if there is something on the radar of parents or administrators, possible gang activity, physical confrontation of some kind, we'll do our very best to meet that need if we're aware of it upfront. And that can segue right into the weapons recovered. We have five firearms so far recovered this year. Last school year, we ended with 21. So we're only in October, and I would say that we're on pace to break last year's record, unfortunately. And only one of those firearms so far were recovered through a scanning operation. The other four were recovered because somebody came forward. So I just wanted to pause there for a second and really spotlight that, that either a student or an adult came forward and told the administration that a student was carrying a loaded weapon in their backpack. And my message to everybody on the call is if somebody comes forward with that kind of information, believe them. Believe them. Don't just think that, oh, you know, it's a game. Kids are just playing. Take the time out to discreetly and gently pull that child to the side, to a room. Alert our school safety agents. They've been doing an excellent job. I can't praise them enough. You're talking about people that have no vests, no less lethal devices, options, no firearms, and they're able to recover these weapons safely, unfortunately, from these young people. And the steps that we take right away is we want to strengthen the case for court purposes. So we implore people to not touch the firearm unnecessarily so that we can do DNA swabs for the police lab. We enhance the arrests, meaning that with the parent's permission, we have the detectives speak to the young person so that we can learn where they got the firearm, who's selling them, where, for how much. And we also speak to our partners at the district attorney's offices just to have a solid case. Because unfortunately, with some of these young people, they have no priors, and they go right to this very, very dangerous option, which is, let me just bring a loaded gun to school. And we've been very fortunate. But our concern is the guns that we haven't recovered so far. And in this age of active shooter, that's not what we want to see. It doesn't have to be a classic active shooter situation, but it could be just one student going at another rival. And that would just be horrible for the school community, for us as a police department, and really for the city at large. So this is something where everybody has to come together to rid our school communities and really the streets from these guns because it is at a dangerous level. The total number of weapons recovered, this is starting July 1st, we start the school year, same time as the fiscal year, is 1,454. So 1,454. Last school year, we were at 790. So that's an increase of 664. 690 of that 1,454 was recovered through our unannounced scanning operation, which means that our support services team pops up at a school. The administration is aware the day before, but we're there because we have intelligence or the administration requested for us to be there, or the DOE, because they have prior information that someone may be carrying something that they shouldn't, or there's a threat to the school, a bomb threat, a shooting threat, something of that nature. The top items are still pepper spray, knives, and taser. So again, our message to the parents is, don't purchase these for your children. Don't purchase, if you're gonna purchase an Orbeez gel gun, those are popular as well. Don't bring it to school. It has no place in a school facility, in a learning environment. And heaven forbid you pull that out, an air pistol, something of that nature. You're inviting something upon you that you otherwise wouldn't want to be engaged in. So we're asking parents, if they're gonna purchase these gel guns that are popular, they're neat, they look nice, to keep them at home. That's the best advice that we can give. As far as the crimes are concerned, with the index crimes, we've recorded 87 crimes so far. That's same time period, July 1st through October 23rd. And last year it was 66. So 87 versus 66. That is an increase of 21 crimes, which we do not like. I will just say that the seven-year average is 90 crimes by this time in the school year. So if you go back seven years, you add the total, you average it by seven, you have 90. But what we're seeing now, the increases in property crimes. Our burglaries are up 18 versus 13. Our grand larcenies are up 34 versus 22. Our felony assaults are up just by one, 25 versus 24. So the message here for educators, for students, is over the summer, best practices would be to just intermittently take an inventory of what you have, your electronic items, iPads, computers, things of that nature, because after the summer passes, you know, we had a lot of summer programming. So there are a lot of outsiders that come into the school for whatever, for summer meals, programming, whatever it may be, and now things go missing. And if a lot of time elapses, it's very difficult for us to get evidence to be able to have a prosecutable case. Sometimes the video is not there. So this is really a lesson learned for me for next school year. During the summer, I would like our borough commanders to come together with the DOE, with parents, with guardians, just to talk about securing the property better through the months where there's no teaching going on. As far as non-index crimes goes, misdemeanor assaults, there's an increase of 93 versus 81. Petty larceny, which is minor thefts, 58 versus 47. And sex offenses are slightly up, which is a problem that we don't want to see, that 25 versus 23. And when we say sex offenses, we don't include rape in this category. These are the misdemeanors. So sexual misconduct, forcible touching, and sexual abuse would comprise that.
Chief Larrin? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt you. If you could just give me, just give me a couple of minutes. Many of you know that, you know, the coalition is always on social media. We've invited elected officials to come. We also have been tweeting at the gubernatorial candidates to come and speak to us because this is, this is an issue that affects not just New York City, but throughout New York State. So we've been putting them on blast. And I see here, I see one of the candidates for governor has shown up. And I have a question for him. I'm happy that he's here to engage us. We're just gonna give him, you know, just two minutes, you know, just to speak because this is what we need. We need to know what's the plan because we need more funding in New York City. We need more money for our police officers, for our school safety agents, and we need them to put the resources into ensuring that our children are safe. So I'm just going to put him on so that we can hear from, oh, I think I lost. Oh, I think I lost him. Oh. Okay, if I know that he's in transit, so if he comes on, that was Congressman Zeldin. So if he comes back on, then I'm sorry, I'll just, you know, if we could just take a brief pause because we, parents, we want to hear what his plan is. We want to hear what both their plans are. So my apologies, Chief Larrin, if you could, maybe, because I think I lost him.
Yep, no worries at all. I'm going to drive it home with the last set of steps that were taken, as you said in the beginning. Some of the initiatives that we've rolled out to the agents is we presented them with active threats training. So we shifted from the CRACE training, which is civilian response to active shooter events, to a new training developed by Louisiana State University. It is FEMA-approved, Department of Homeland Security-approved, and it's called Run, Hide, Fight. And all of our agents took it through the summer and into September. And administrators took it as well from the Department of Education. And what makes this training a little different from the previous one is that when we say run, hide, fight, it's not linear. It doesn't mean run first from the threat, then hide, then fight when there's nothing else left. It means if you can do one of these steps safely, do it. So if you're on one side of the school, on the east wing, and the threat is on the west wing, if you're right by the exit with your kids, take that chance. Get out. Get out of harm's way and take them to safety. Everything that you do, do it with a purpose. Run with a purpose, hide with a purpose, or fight with a purpose. I will say that our educators, our school safety agents, they're very good at declaring these shelter-ins and lockdowns immediately without wasting time. But we wanted to just give that refresher and what's current and what's out there. The CRACE training that I mentioned, it was affiliated with ALERT, which is part of Texas State University, and that's 20 years old. So we looked at what's out there, what's newer, what's more relevant, and we decided to go with this training because the ALERT training developed by Texas State, there were some concerns there with the Uvalde shooting. They made some, they reached some judgments prematurely about how the police officers responded. And we felt that this new partnership with Louisiana State is better. That's what our Counterterrorism Bureau uses for the police department, for police officers. So we felt, why not give this to our agents? They also receive refreshers and tourniquets. And we saw it used just yesterday at Tottenville High School. The Level 3 at that school, Level 3 Matera, he put it over the radio right away. And he went right across the street and applied a tourniquet to this young person at risk to his own life because for all he knew, the shooters could have came right back. And he was able to apply it successfully and get the young man the medical attention that he needed. The, one of the other initiatives, speaking of radios, we were able to connect our agents directly with a communications section dispatcher. So what that means is that they're now connected to the actual 911 call center through their radios. That wasn't the case for as long as I can remember. Whenever an agent transmits over the radio, the call would get routed here to Long Island City, to a fellow school safety agent. And again, our agents are great, wonderful people, but that's not what they were hired and trained to do. So now when the agents transmit over the radio, they connect with a police communications technician who has direct access to their partners who handle the jobs for the police precincts. And we have testimonials of incidents where the agents put it over right away, what they saw, and they were able to get help. Tottenville being one of them, which was just yesterday. Marine Park Junior High School, unfortunately, there was an event right in front of the school where first it seemed like a domestic violence case, but then it was leaning towards a suicide. But right away, the agents put it over, and the police were able to come and stop one of the parties and hold him so that the detectives can do their investigation. And there was another event where there was a Grady versus Lincoln High School conflict, and the shooting happened right across the street. The agents were able to put it over, and the kids all went back to the school. And everything was buttoned up nicely because of the communication. Also with communication, we were able to give all of the agents department cell phones. That wasn't the case. Last school year, it was only reserved for our supervisors. So now the agents are connected to 911. They can see the transmissions printed. Whatever's happening over the radio, it's typed out, and they can read the job. So they can see descriptions of suspects, direction of flight, any vehicles involved. They're able to keep up with trainings through these cell phones. They also can receive domain awareness messaging, which is flyers for wanted people, beyond the lookout alerts, things of that nature. Our agents on Staten Island received a new APX NextRadio, which has a geolocator. So if, God forbid, something happens to one of our agents, we know exactly where they are on a map through an application called CommandAware. With the older radios, you wouldn't be able to tell exactly where an agent is positioned if they were not able to communicate. So Staten Island and Bronx East has these radios, and we're asking for funding to roll that out citywide to all of our agents. If the radio fails through the airwaves, it has 5G connectivity where it can communicate as a cellphone. If the 5G doesn't work, then it'll go to Wi-Fi. We are working on, we ask for funding for bullet-resistant vests for all of our agents because we do understand that they are on the front line. They are at that main entrance. And they really are in harm's way. And if nothing else, they should at least be able to have their bodies protected, give them time to seek refuge and be able to transmit whatever it is that they're seeing and hearing.
Chief Larrin, I'm sorry. Let me see if this is Congressman Zeldin. So I'm just gonna allow the president to talk. Hello, could you please identify yourself? Lee, L-E-E-Z-A?
Hello?
Okay, I'm sorry. We're trying to identify Congressman Lee Zeldin, but we're gonna have Q and A shortly.
Sorry. Okay, I think.
Yeah. So we will come back to you. Okay? Thank you.
No problem.
I'm, you know, I know that Congressman Zeldin is on here and he's on a phone, but I can't identify him. So we, you know, Congressman Zeldin, if you could just text and just let me know what number to identify you on, that would be helpful. We'll continue. My apologies, Chief Larrin.
No worries, no worries. Almost done. We also acknowledge that young people are committing crimes or getting involved in things that they shouldn't during the school day. So we are reintroducing the truancy initiative. Right now, because of the resource, the staffing issue with Patrol and us, it's difficult to commit to every day. But we are looking to do something next week in the Bronx on a limited basis, and we'll look to rotate that throughout the city. It's not so much to have, to round up as many young people as possible. It's more so to set a tone and to show that if you belong in a school during this time period, that's where you should be. And we feel that there's a lesson in that. That's a teachable moment. It's not an enforcement action. There will not be a court case generated out of that. It's just documentation, and the child gets returned to the school, and the parent gets notified that their child was truant for the day. We believe that that's a step that just went away, and it shouldn't be dismissed. So we're looking to reintroduce that. We are scheduling a meeting with the Department of Ed to talk about Project Divid because we'll work with anybody that's willing to help out young people. We understand that not all of them want to be an explorer. young people. We understand that not all of them want to be an explorer or interact with somebody in uniform. So we're looking forward to that. And also, I just wanted to just reiterate to the group that it's not all enforcement. Uh, we do have a very good community outreach component, and if it's okay, I would like to uh, yield the rest of my time just for this block to uh, commanding officer Barbara Welch. She's doing a lot of great things with young people that sometimes goes unnoticed. So if that's okay with you, Ms. Davis, Barbara Welch can uh, take it from here.
Good morning. I'll I'll be really brief. Again, I'm commanding officer Barbara Welch um, from the School Safety Division's Community Outreach Unit. I would just like to state that we are doing presentations. We are available um, to come out to schools and do pre- uh, presentations on bullying, gang awareness, sexual sexual assaults. We also do socio dramas, which is educational theater. We just uh, did a wonderful uh, presentation at the Union Hall, U F T, uh, Union Hall for uh, bullying uh, campaign, which went well. Um, we have a lot of 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 DOE administrators who are interested in us coming out, so we are available to come out and do presentations and socio dramas to the schools. We also um, have the Explorer Program. Uh, we have a new post, we're at, I think, fifteen posts in school safety, but I just want to take the time to talk about the new post that we have where we realize that we have a community of children that do not speak English that are coming over, and we have right now about seventeen uh, uh, young people who do not speak English who are now a part of the Explorer Post where we are working with them to um, just adjust into our school system and into the police department system. So we are working hard to reach all communities, you know. So we're available. I'm gonna put my information in the chat. We're available to go out um, and do presentations, socio dramas, and if anyone needs us to come out, feel free to reach out. My information will be in the chat. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, command, yeah, commanding officer Welch. Um, we are going to um, continue now. I'm just looking at the time, but we're going to continue now with uh, Mr. Barnett from the Department of Education, and then followed by Assembly Member Riley um, and Council Member Kevin uh, Riley as well. Um, and then uh, once we know when uh, Council Member Holden is available, then we'll go to Council Member Holden. Um, so um, Mr. Barnett, we're, we're talking about, you know, physical safety, yes, uh, but there's a lot more to it because our kids are in the streets. And uh, we need to get them out of the street. So I heal, I I heal the time you hold to you.
Yes. Okay, tha- thank you so much, uh, Mona. I really, really appreciate that. And and before I begin, I just want to thank uh, my colleagues, Chief Lauren and Officer Welch, right, for all of their efforts in ensuring that our children are safe. Um, that we have uh, safe, productive, thriving uh, uh, school communities. And so again, all of your efforts uh, certainly are to be applauded. Um, and then we need to do our part, right? And and that's where the Office of of Safety and Prevention Partnerships comes comes in. And so I I'm very happy uh, to announce to to the public and 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 to my my counterparts on the panel um, that the New York City Public Schools Chancellor, David Banks, um, along with the Office of Safety and Prevention Partnerships um, have introduced a brand new initiative for this school year called Project Pivot, uh, which aims to ensure that students have access to additional support, uh, resources um, uh, uh, from caring adults to guide them towards their academic and social emotional success. Um, the focus of the project is to have community-based organizations engage our young people um, during a pivotal time during their development. Um, the majority of our schools that we have identified to be a part of this initiative are high school uh, aged uh, uh, students that will be uh, involved in the various programs, and the purpose is to develop um, and guide them uh, towards their fullest potential. Um, the activities that are designed uh, by the community partners are to support these identified students um, uh, uh, who are, will be targeted primarily based upon behavior issues that they may have exhibited. Um, some other challenges that are getting in the way of their fullest potential of them uh, uh, meeting their fullest potential. Um, and the programming that will be provided by the CBOs, not only will be nurturing and caring, but will be aligned by the five pillars of Project Pivot, uh, which are purpose, integrity, voice, uh, optimism, and tenacity, which we feel are five uh, characteristics that all of our young people need in order to uh, to succeed. Uh, the cohort of a hundred and thirty-eight schools was selected based upon a combination of safety factors, uh, which included number of suspensions, uh, incidences, incidences, excuse me, involving weapons, uh, chronic absentee, chronic absenteeism among students, um, as well as some other social factors, right? Students that might be overage, undercredited, um, students that are in temporary housing, and from that algorithm, we identified um, the schools that we felt were 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 most in need of our of our of our support. Um, this is an opportunity for the schools to select community-based, many, many of the community-based organizations that we have offered as potential service providers, our grassroots organizations, uh, many of whom live in the same neighborhoods that our students live in and can certainly uh, provide that social capital um, that will make it a a little bit easier for our young people to formulate those relationships that we know can be so critical in them making positive choices for themselves. Um, and so through this initiative, like the DOE is encouraging the community-based organizations, those that we've identified um, through through demonstrated success, as well as those that we are unaware of, that schools have brought to our attention, we're we're working closely with them um, to implement uh, programs that will drive positive change in the various school communities. Um, and amongst those strategies include social emotional support for students, teaching violence interruption techniques, which include de-escalation, mediation, conflict resolution, um, techniques creating safe corridor passageway for our students to get safely to and from school. Um, and then o- overall, we are offering engaging extended learning opportunities that will activate the possibilities and opportunities for students that they may have, may may have not uh, felt were available to them, right? And so when we broaden our opportunities and 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 possibilities for our students, they will uh, less likely be engaged in the negative behavior that we often see uh, far too many of them uh, being involved in. And so uh, the schools identified community-based organizations that were aligned to the uh, to the following six service category, uh, service areas, uh, safety and violence prevention, uh, leadership and career readiness, counseling and mentoring, academic and attendance support, uh, enrichment programs through sports, recreational activities, and the arts, uh, and family support services. And so through these six service areas, uh, schools were able to select, uh, like I said, community-based organizations that have a proven track record in engaging young people uh, to provide the services uh, and the programmatic opportunities that, again, that we know will keep them away from uh, making negative choices and 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 during that idle time that often uh, can can um, you know, lead to our young people not not making the best choices for themselves. And so we have encouraged schools to offer programming after school and during Saturday hours, although there are some schools that are providing the services for their students throughout the school day. Um, we we do expect a large number of them to provide the programming for students during those off uh, hours uh, after school and Saturday, as as I mentioned. Um, and so for those that were are interested in learning more about Project Pivot, you can certainly reach me uh, personally, uh, as well as contact our Project Pivot, uh, send a question to our Project Pivot email address, and I'll include both of those in the uh, chat. Uh, we're certainly looking forward to answering any questions that parents may have, uh, who are interested in having their 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 uh, children uh, sign up. Um, again, thi- this is the, let me add this last piece. Um, there are fifty-two schools in the Bronx that have been identified, followed by thirty-eight schools uh, in Brooklyn, twenty-six schools in Manhattan, thirteen schools in Queens, and nine schools in Staten Island. We really tried to target those campus uh, locations that had uh, uh, several schools located in one geographical area. And because we found that a number of uh, incidences, violent incidences last year took place either on campuses or near campuses. And after we looked a little further, um, we we saw that a lot of it had to do with uh, there wasn't um, uh, enough of a common culture amongst the schools on those on those campus locations. And so uh, a part of the initiative is to encourage programming, not uh, only for the students at a particular school on a campus, but to encourage programming that takes place campus campus-wide. So you encourage students uh, collaborating uh, across the schools. And so we think that that will decrease the number of incidences that we've seen as well.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Barnett. Uh, just for our parents, I know that you have um, lots of questions. Um, we're just going to do just a quick two, three minutes um, from our panelists, and then we'll open up the floor for questions. Uh, you can also um, now put questions in the chat box to our panelists, uh, both the chat box and the Q and A. We have parents asking questions. Please feel free to engage them in um, both chat windows, um, if you'd like. And with our parents, we will open the floor so you can ask uh, direct questions to the panelists. Um, our requirement is that when you do ask the question, you are required to be on camera. So just so that you know, you gotta be on camera to ask the question. We wanna know who you are, we wanna see you. So we're going to continue with Assembly Member uh, Mike Riley, followed um, by um, Councilman uh, Kevin Riley, and I think also Councilmember Bob Holden will be joining us uh, very, very soon. Assemblyman Riley.
Well, thank you, Mona. Thank you for having me. Thank you uh, to the NYPD and the Department of Education uh, for uh, joining us here tonight and giving us some insight into some of the programs and the practices that are going on. Uh, to give you a little bit of background about me, uh, I'm a former member of Community Education Council Thirty-One, uh, C C Thirty-One here on Staten Island, uh, for, I've served in that role for ten years and last four as uh, president of the the C C before I was elected uh, to the State Assembly, representing uh, the South Shore Staten Island, which actually covers uh, Tottenville High School. Uh, I'll touch on that in a bit, but I first want to say that uh, school safety, safety agent Level Three Mataro uh, truly was remarkable, uh, as well as the rest of the staff at Tottenville, Tottenville High School. Uh, I will tell you, I was on the scene shortly after. Uh, I was engaging with uh, the staff members in the NYPD, and in my former life, I was a lieutenant in the police department. Uh, so I wear, I wore a lot of hats, and I try and put those into play whenever uh, I can. Uh, cause my life intertwines with all this, all this uh, things that go on. But I will say that uh, for the amount of kids that were outside uh, at this missile, fifteen hundred at that time, the school has approximately four thousand altogether. Uh, I will say that the staff did a remarkable job, and we are very fortunate uh, that only one student suffered an injury, uh, and it was non-life threatening. Uh, but school safety agent Level Three Mataro, uh, he actually uh, took, put a tourniquet on. Uh, he saved that boy's life, and uh, there's no, there's no shortchanging that. That's exactly what he did. And he needs to be recognized for that, and uh, we should all thank him and kiss our kids a little and hug them a little tighter, uh, because uh, you never know. But touching uh, touching on a little bit, I co-chair now a a minority conference, uh, State Assembly, uh, School Safety Task Force uh, with uh, Assembly Member Doug Smith from Long Island, and my colleague Assembly Member Joe Gi- uh, J- uh, Gilio uh, from upstate. And we are holding five town halls across the state. Our first one was in Suffolk County uh, two weeks ago. Uh, last Thursday, we ha- we held one in Staten Island, and there's one in Rochester tonight, and then there's another one in uh, the western part of the state. And then we're culminating on the fifth one on November second in Albany. Uh, the, what we're trying to do is gather best practices from around the state, from experts in school districts, law enforcement, mental health, and we're trying to put together a clearinghouse. Uh, this hasn't been done uh, in over a decade. So the, I think it's uh, long past time that we put together that information, and we try and find out how we can help each other, how we can help our school districts, how we can help law enforcement, and most importantly, how we can help students and families. Uh, I think one of the things that we've been hearing a lot of uh, in these first sessions is the mental health aspect. And we know for 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 a fact that we are short-changed on uh, how many uh, counselors we have. Uh, so there has to be a lot of partnerships going on, and what uh, Mr. Barnett mentioned here with Pivot is something that's remarkable, and I'm gonna make sure that that's part of this clearinghouse that we're talking about, uh, because that's something where we are really making uh, some headway with some partnerships. Uh, I will say, touching on uh, something that I've been advocating for since two thousand twelve after Sandy Hook as a member of C C Thirty-One, uh, was to lock the front doors of schools. And I, at P S eight uh, last week for our town hall, uh, chief safety uh, uh, officer for safety and uh, partnership, Mark Rampisson, announced that P S eight was going to be a pilot program for locking the front door. There's gonna be one in each of the five boroughs. Uh, obviously, I'm gonna continue advocating because I think the program should be expanded uh, quickly. Uh, but this is a good step, and it's something that uh, I thank my relationships and my partnerships uh, over the years uh, with the DOE and the NYPD uh, so that we can get to this point. Uh, there's a lot of work to do, and we all know that. Uh, and we will, and I'm, I know everyone on this panel will work tirelessly to to make that happen. Uh, but you know, this is a good sign that we're getting together, we're exchanging information. And like I said, the object, uh, the objective of our town hall is to create a clearinghouse. And I'm hoping that we will have that report ready uh, before the new year, uh, if not shortly in into January. And uh, we'll have it uh, ready for everybody to look at and take the best practices, whether they're in an urban or suburban school district. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, uh, Assemblyman uh, Riley. You've, you've been on the forefront for years when it comes to uh, school safety. Um, our next speaker is um, Councilmember Kevin Riley, followed by Councilmember Bob Holden.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mona, for hosting this uh, lovely town hall tonight. Uh, I'm Councilmember Kevin Riley from the Northeast Bronx in the twelfth district. I represent Co-op City, Inowal, East Chester, Olavale, Wakefield uh, area in the Northeast Bronx. Um, I'm just gonna talk about some things um, that worked in our district, uh, some things that I've been doing in the community. Uh, last year, we had a tremendous uh, incident uh, in the Co-op City section uh, with uh, Truman High School uh, around that area. Uh, I'm sorry, my daughters are coming dying. Uh, but Truman High School, uh, and what we were able to do, we go into side, inside schools, and we try to address it holistic, in a holistic manner. Uh, we go in there, we talk to the principal, we talk to parents, we talk to students, and we kind of figure out what they want to do in the school. Um, there was an idea that was going on within the community that even my predecessor was uh, luckily to bring to the district uh, the Beacon Program. So we were able to advocate and kind of push that program within the school. And we've been seeing that a lot of things been going better, and we work with programs like AIM High with Brother Sherman Brown. Um, I think my approach is, we have to figure out why the students are carrying guns in the first place, uh, why they don't feel safe uh, in the first place. I think we have to address that actual issue. Uh, I know growing up in my area, when I was growing up, sometimes I carried a weapon because I wanted to feel safe because incidents were happening within the community, um, and things that stopped me from doing that. Uh, and not even doing that in the sense of trying to harm someone, but doing that in the sense of protecting myself, with thinking that's the only way I can protect myself. So even this uh, Brother Barnett was talking about with Project Pivot, programs like that could actually address issues like this. Uh, cause you could actually figure out why these students are actually carrying these weapons to school, figure out what's going on at home. I mean, we have a tool right now that we don't talk about a lot, social media, that plays a huge, huge factor um, in a lot of the violence that's going on within our school uh, as well. When things are happening uh, on social media and kids feel like they have some sense of pride now, uh, that is something that needs to be addressed as well. And we just came through a pandemic. Uh, a lot of children went through a lot within the last, you know, couple of years. So there's a lot of ways to address this. Uh, this is a step, uh, like my colleague, Assembly Member Riley stated. Uh, we have to work together. Uh, I'm a very open elected official. I like to hear all perspectives. Uh, that's how you'll actually address an issue. Um, so I'm just here to listen. I I thank you, Mona, for always opening a platform for us uh, to actually speak about uh, things like this and listen to parents. Um, and I'll just yield the floor back to you so we could actually get to some parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Riley. Um, and uh, Councilmember Holden, uh, thank you so much for for joining us. You uh, we missed you for the quick introduction, so if you could do a quick introduction, we know we're preaching to the choir with you. Uh, Councilmember Holden, so uh, the floor is, the floor is yours. What do we do?
Well, again, uh, thank you, everyone, and uh, I was on another uh, Zoom. We got a bunch of Zooms going on tonight with meetings and uh, it's the way I can get to all the 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 meetings and hearings uh, by Zoom. But I wanna also acknowledge uh, my colleague, Councilmember Riley, and uh, Assemblymember Riley, uh, we're, we're on the same page with school safety. And um, I've been um, I had a number of incidents in my district. We did have a shooting outside of Maspath High School, but I represent the communities of Maspath, Middle Village, uh, Glendale, and. But I represent the communities of Masbeth, Middle Village, Glendale, and parts of Woodside, Woodhaven, and Ridgewood in Queens. And I have a lot of parents that are concerned. I certainly support the NYPD being in the schools. And they, they keep us safe. And I, I have contacted the Chancellor and the Mayor's Office about installing a buzzer system with cameras. And we have one school in my district that they do, the. A few years ago, the principal paid for a camera and a buzzer system, and it's worked great. They do that on Long Island. In those schools, a parent is not even allowed, when they pick up their children, not even allowed in the school. What happens is they predetermined that they have the right to pick up the child. They're gonna pick up the child, let's say, at one o'clock. When they go to the front door, they ring the buzzer, they identify the parent. And what happens, this is in Nassau County, what happens is the child is then brought outside and the parent never comes into school. Which is, you never know what can happen if anybody comes in that's not supposed to be there. So we wanna keep everyone safe. So I believe in the buzzer system. The Mayor's Office and the Chancellor's Office says they were researching it. Now they said they're going to implement it. They just have to find what type of system and camera system they're going to deploy. But it will be hopefully coming soon to a, to a school near you. Where we can't just leave the doors open. I had an incident not too far from my district where, I don't know if you read about it. A young man, nineteen years old, came into school. He was disturbed, let's put it that way, acting irrationally. And it took the police nineteen, he got past the security. And he was combative, let's put it that way. But luckily, the principal knew martial arts and was able to subdue the young man. And he got the help he needed, but we don't know what would have happened. Had the school safety officers not slowed him down, they eventually got the handcuffs on the person. And he was subdued and with the principal. But again, we have to, we have to lock our doors and that's what I believe in, that that wouldn't have happened. And we, we learned, today's world, it's a different world than when I went to school. And most of us went to schools, a different world where we never, I can never imagine somebody coming into a school and shooting small children. I could never, ever imagine that. In my, in, in the worst horror movie, you couldn't imagine that. And that's becoming, you know, all too often a reality. So what, what I will do is certainly pledge that I will fight for everything, you know, that we could do to secure our schools. And to keep our children safe. Nothing's more important to me. And I think our children are so important. I have now five grandchildren. Because my children are all adults, but I have five grandchildren that they mean the world to me. They're so precious. And I would never, ever want, you know, I, I would want them safe. I would never, ever put them in harms way. But I, I don't know if you all agree, but I think that our doors have to be locked on the public schools. And, and if, you know, we do whatever measure we need, but let's, let's do, let's, we lock our doors in our homes, right? We don't just leave our doors open. We shouldn't leave our schools open. So thank everyone. Thanks, Mona. Again, nice seeing you. And hope to see everyone in person soon.
Thank you, Councilman Holden. I think that Councilmember Ariola is, is on. So I'm just going to see if I can get her.
By, by the way, I just wanna mention, I got a text from Lee Zeldin. He was on and he said, oh, I just call it up. He, he was traveling between Utica and Syracuse and the service was bad. So I think he got cut off though. So that was before I got on, but I just got a text from him. So, all right, he apologizes for.
No, thank you. And, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll be here for a little while longer. So if Congress Zeldin can, can try again, because we really would like to engage him. And a lot of this that needs to be done requires funding from the state. So whoever is governor needs to be one hundred percent in support of school safety and protecting our children. So we do wanna hear from him.
Thank you. I'll, I'll, I'll text him back and mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ariola has joined us. Welcome, Councilwoman. Thank you so much for joining us. You know what's going on. If you could just briefly, you know, introduce yourself to our parents, your district. And then just, you know, just your brief remarks so that we can then open the floor to parents soon.
I, as you said, my name is Councilwoman Joanne Ariola. I represent District Thirty Two. It's in Queens County. And it's in School District Twenty Seven. We have the same problems that the other schools have. We're worried about the safety of our students. I work very closely with my colleagues and friends like Bob Holden, like Kevin, Kevin Riley. Both in the State Assembly, Assemblymember Riley and Councilmember Riley. And we really are trying to put forth good legislation to make sure that our schools remain safe for our students. But I could not agree more that we need to lock the doors. The private schools lock their doors. The public schools have no reason not to lock their doors. I think that it is necessary at this point. We're having too many incidences at schools where, where kids are being, being assaulted, attacked. And we, it, the buzzer system that Councilmember Holden talks about is perfect. We, as he said, we have the ring doorbell on our, most of our doors. And it really is a benefit to homeowners. And there's no reason why we cannot make that investment for the safety of our children. Unfortunately, school shootings and school attacks are becoming more of the norm and not less. So we're gonna have to really move forward. In our district, we held, and I appreciate school safety doing this with us. We held a meeting with all our principals to really find out what they thought would be best. To help keep their students and staff safe, their teachers. And it was, it was all about more of a NYPD presence, more security agents, school safety agents. And locking the doors. So we, we bang that gun all the time. More NYPD, more safety agents, and looking into locking the doors. I know there's a pilot program, you know. But I, I don't see how it could fail. So I, I would like to see that pilot program become, you know, the program throughout the school system in the five boroughs. So I'm, I'm here to listen to the parents. I'm here to move forward on whatever the parents think best for their children. And, and as I know my colleagues are. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We're going to now go to our parent leaders who are on here. If you could just, you know, keep your remarks to one to two minutes so that we can open the floor to our parents. Who have lots of questions, lots and lots of questions. So we will start off first with Robin from Community Education Council in District Two. Who is also the School Safety Committee co-chair.
Thank you so much, Mona. I just wanna piggyback on what you just said, Councilmember Ariola, about locked doors. My, one of my schools is P S thirty-three in Chelsea. And a block away is Avenue, is a private school, very elite private school, where they have bulletproof glass, locked doors, armed safety, security guards. Everything they possibly want. They have a panic room, they have police patrolling. Where's the equity when one block away, one avenue away, P S thirty-three, at one point had one safety agent? Luckily, Mark represented, returned our second safety agent. But that was after we had an incident and a getaway car was stashed right next to our playground during dismissal. An elementary school children were forced to stand there while police chased an armed man. Through the, the play area into the housing projects next door to the school. And I, it just blows my mind that we are still at a point where we're not locking doors. We're still arguing about whether or not safety agents should, should wear bulletproof vests. I don't see why they shouldn't. I don't understand why they're not paid more. And I, I double down on my reasoning that we should have more, not fewer. People looking out for our children. We need to increase their presence at every school. And I also think we need to have police patrolling in some of these schools where we've had incidences in the past. I, I wanna open up to the parents and I wanna give Elisa a chance to speak. But I one thousand percent agree with what everyone is saying here. I love the idea of Pivot. I love working with children. I love finding out why they're carrying weapons. But we also need to protect at the same time, every single student that's in New York City. Thank you.
Thank you. Elisa, if you could please introduce yourself and, you know, tell, tell our parents about the citywide council on, on high schools. I mean, you guys are the, you know, represent the largest amounts of New York City parents as a council.
Hi, good evening. Yes, my name is Elisa O'Shea. I'm the Queens, one of the Queens representatives for the citywide council on high schools. And I am a resident of District Twenty Seven and my child attends in District Twenty Five. I just wanna say that, you know, I really appreciate the council members coming tonight, especially my councilmember Ariola. That was really nice that she came by. And one of, I believe one of those five guns that was recently recovered was from a junior high school on Rockaway Boulevard in District Twenty Seven. You know, we have our fair share in Southeast Queens of, of issues in the schools. And as the citywide council, we deal with kind of putting together all that information, working with each district, each borough. Working with our borough presidents' offices, the other parent leadership groups. I'm a member of the CPAC High School Subcommittee. We also discuss in that forum, school safety. CPAC also has its own forum for Mark Ramperson and other members of the D O E. To come and talk about school safety. And I just wanna say that we did also have Mark Ramperson come to our meeting last month. I had actually a question. I am a parent also. And one of the things that Mr. Ramperson talked about was a new task force that would be a mobile school safety agent unit. And they would be protecting the corridor around the schools. So my question would be, when will that task force be assembled? Are we pulling some of these school safety officers that we're already short on out of the schools to do the task force? And, you know, how will we target the corridors that they're going to patrol? That is the number one question that we get from parents in our meetings. You know, the, the area around the school, the, the, the students leaving to go on public transportation, the high school students for us. Going to the subway stop, to the bus stop, and the school safety agents not really being able to leave the building as if there's only one there. So that would be my question tonight, if I had one and I can ask, what's going on with this task force and how can we better protect the corridors around the schools? Thank you.
Thank you, Elisa. And we're gonna come back to your question because that's, that's a great question. I also wanna know the answer to that because we did have it and it was taken away. We will continue on with my fellow co-founder of the School Safety Coalition. And then we will have Jimmy from Staten Island, a parent, as well as a former school safety agent speak. And then we need to open it up to the parents because the, it's just so many, so many questions and so many concerns. So, Hyann, the, the floor is yours. I'm timing you.
I'm, I'm gonna keep it brief. I'm gonna give you, hello, good night, everyone. How are you? Had a long day. I just got in here. I had to do a mommy thing, so I was running late, but I'm here. Good night, everyone. Good night, Chief Flaren. How are you? Good night, everyone on the call. Welcome, welcome, welcome. A lot is going on, guys. And let me introduce myself real quick. School Safety Agent of seventeen years, been a parent for over thirty, been a lifelong New York City resident. Attended New York City public schools from elementary through community. I love what I do, but hey, this is the thing, you know, I'm also a parent. So the parent aspect, the school safety aspect, I'm also, you know, the co-founder, Mona's my co-person. We founded this coalition because of the unsafe concerns and issues that we saw were going to happen, that we were trying to tell people about, that no one actually wanted to observe. And now we have gotten here. So thank you to everyone who's in attendance. Thank you to everyone who's asking questions and leaving questions in the chat. And I'm gonna answer some of those questions and I'm gonna be as brief as I possibly can. So the violence that's on the streets, that are somewhere surrounding our schools and on our perimeters. Are the leftover residuals and Mona knows that I'm a realist and I always speak my mind of defund the police. This is what we have ended up with. I'm just telling you what this is. I've been doing this job and I wanted to know that all these things you guys want to implement back into school safety, we're already within with school safety. But our city council, and no disrespect to you, Mr. Holden, I love you, no disrespect to you, Mr. Riley. But the city council created this mess.
Previous cohorts.
Previous cohorts, and then you still have some that are lurking within there that are still there. And I'm coming for them. I hope they know that. Because you're messing with my children's safety and you're messing with my colleagues livelihood in our lives. So yes, I'm coming for them. They created this, defund, give it to school safety, police in schools, we want them out, U Y C, everyone's chanting, all this stuff. And the numbers that we had in school safety was sufficient. Plus, we also had two hundred uniformed task force police officers who were at schools that had high incidence of crimes. You wanna now incorporate Project Pivot, well, we already had Project Pivot, but they took it away. Why? Because they wanted to say, defund the police. They took away the safe corridors because now we don't have the proper numbers of people. We don't longer have the bodies. People left. People phased out. They didn't hire people. Let's talk about that. There was no hiring in school safety because everybody was blocking the classes. So, you know, at one point, school safety had a whole bunch of units that you guys wanna implement, but they took them away. So that makes no sense to me. But now we are here. And you know, the disrespectful comments and some of the questions that are coming, they're not needed. Because I'm speaking to you not only from a parent, as a parent, because I, I have children in the system, I have a stake in it. I'm speaking as a school safety agent who works within a building every single day. The majority of the people on the panel, you're not there for that. You don't, you don't see what school safety does. You don't know what school safety knows. And you say, well, school safety is not needed. But why do you think there hasn't been a school shooting inside of a New York City public school? Let's be realistic. They've happened everywhere else, other places. They've experienced it. We're experiencing it in our vicinity, around our perimeter. But it hasn't happened inside of the building. And I will singly stand wholeheartedly on this fact that it's the school safety agents that are stopping. And are interfering with that. It's the deterrent of school safety. And what you don't know is that our children know that we're there. Our children know that we communicate directly to nine one one because they listen to us. So they know that if something happens directly in that building, we're doing what we have to do and make sure that the help is getting there. It's gonna stop the clock. So we are deterrent. And for the person who said we should be at TSA. I don't have anything against TSA, but we're not TSA, but school safety agents. And the job that we do is we protect your children every day. So you should tell the people who are against scanning and don't like the term of scanning. That most of them are chanting police free school. They don't want us there for the scanning. They go to the airport, they get scanned, right? Anywhere you go, you get scanned. City, state, federal buildings, you get scanned. Disneyland, you're getting scanned. I'm on vacation. I'll take my kids on trips. We're getting scanned. Buzzers. I'm not against the buzzers, but buzzers work on game shows because game shows ain't got that wrong. You don't have to, listen, if I'm opening the door for someone, I'm, I would be the person utilizing the buzzer and the camera. So I'm telling you what I know. Somebody's outside, I see them on the camera, I buzz them in, they come in. So we got a buzzing delivery people. We have to buzzing, people that are coming for deliveries, cafeteria deliveries, buzzinging parents, buzzinging whomever, whatever. But people don't feel too bad is that the school is a safe haven. So at any given time, if someone needs assistance, they can come to the school because the school is a safe haven. It's a safe haven. School safety agents are civil servants. We civilly serve the public. So if something's happening, not just inside the school, if someone gets hurt or injured on the perimeter. And it's not a dangerous situation, you have to also render them aid. It could be you. It could be your child. It could be your grandmother, father, sister, brother who needs assistance. So the open door policy, that's what that door is for. But let me stop the clock. G R P, General Response Protocol. That's our lockdowns, our evacuations and all of our other drills. Shelter ends, we lock that door because the threat is outside. No one in, no one out. But in the case of a hard lockdown, if there's an actual shooter inside the building, we may have buzzed them in. We don't have a scanner. We don't have the magnetometer. We don't know what he has. Now he's inside with us. The doors are locked. Now if we go into a lockdown mode and something's happening, emergency services that needs to get into the building. Can't get into the building because the door is locked. Who's buzzing them in? See, people don't think about this because you're thinking from outside the box, you're not inside the scenario to know what it is that we know. You want police in the schools. Well, we are the police presence in the schools because we can train by the most efficient, effective police department in the country, in the world. Because people from all over the world come to NYPD to get trained. And we have that training inside of school safety. What do they do? We provide emergency services, we're triage trained, we provide anything that E M Ts. We, we, we're hybrids of everything. Why do you think that level three, and shout out to my coworker who was able to go and render that young man aid? You talk about the security and start the private school and that they're armed security, but they're not trained to do some of the things that we are trained. They are trained to do so much more than you actually know. You talk about the security and start the private school and that they're armed security, but they're not trained to do some of the things that we are trained. We are trained to do so much more than you actually know. They have to call nine one one. We don't call anybody. We go over our radio directly to nine one one dispatch to get help immediately. And if we need to know what's the ETA on that help, we can get that as well. But in the meantime, we're trained to be giving children aid, CPR, AED, triage, first aid. That's what school safety does. So the disrespectful comments, listen, we're not here for that. We had to have a conversation about the best practices of keeping the school community safe, which I have a stake in it because I'm a parent. So people need to understand what happened outside of Tottenville is disturbing to me and everybody else and to every single agent. We need vests. Yes, we do. Because we know what it is, but you don't realize that we're gonna put our life on the line for your children. That's what our job is. So we have to all come together to understand. It's not your child. It's all of our children. I don't see my kid and then don't see anybody else's. Can I see everybody's child? Because that's what school safety does. And I don't care what community you're in, how you feel about whatever. The NYPD is the best unit ever. School safety is the best division to be trained to be taking care of your children. And you don't have an idea of what we do for your children throughout the day and what's being done for the whole entire community throughout the day. So the disrespectful comments, don't need it. Project Pivot, the question I have as a parent is, you know, the individuals that are gonna come in, are there gonna be background checks on those individuals, proper background checks? And will parents have the right to say yea or nay? So do they want to have their children invite, involved in these programs or how would that work? And Christine Letteno, I wanted to address you. When you said you want police and not agents, it doesn't matter. When it's the safety of your children, you should not care who it is that's giving them assistance and keeping them safe. And I don't care what county in New York City you reside in. These children are all of our children. And at the end of the day, the job that myself and my colleagues do is incomparable to anyone else's. Because we deal with Department of Education, we also deal with NYPD and everybody in between. And whoever comes through that building, we have to encounter them. And we are the first line of defense when it comes to any emergency situation. So you should want to keep us there. And while we have not had a school shooting, God bless us, in New York City Public Schools inside the building is because myself and the few of us that are left. And we do need more. So go advocate for us to get more. Because we can be, come back to the numbers of six thousand when we were sufficient, when we had our truancy units. We had our uniform task force, our own uniform task force that was robust, as well as uniforms, school safety task force, officers, police officers who were also with us on the unit to provide safe corridor to not just your kids, not just your family members, not just the staff, but the merchants to and from the transit hubs. Advocate for that. Advocate for us to get a better starting salary so that we can get quality applicants. Advocate for those things. Those are the things that you should advocate for. School safety agents don't want guns. We don't want to walk through guns, walk through our buildings with guns, carrying guns. Because that's not what we want our children to see. And a gun is not gonna stop a school shooting. It's just not. It takes wits, chutzpah, and a heart made of gold. And that's what school safety has. So guys, welcome to the forum. Well.
Jimmy, you're next. You, you, you gotta go after Kyan.
Why do I always go after Kyan? Why is that?
He just blew through my timer.
Hi, Jimmy.
All right. So I'll, I'll.
After you, we gotta open it up to the.
Yeah, I, 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 I want to hear from the parents. Absolutely. So I just want to talk about facts and solutions, not just, you know, my opinions. So I heard Chief Laren say that we're gonna get a hundred twenty eight uh, agents in, in the next class. Historically, historically, and this is a fact, that Staten Island gets two to four of those agents. So two to four of those agents is not gonna help Staten Island. It's not gonna help any part of our district. Tottenville High School had four and one, meaning four agents, one level three. Now, they have two fixed posts, which means they have two pre, two people roaming the building of four thousand uh, kids. When I was a school safety agent, which I was, used to be a school safety agent, I was in Tottenville. I was the fourteenth agent at Tottenville High School. That's five years ago. That's not that long ago. And so there's, so I also heard Chief Laren say that we can bar from other boroughs. Let's bar from other boroughs. Let's bring them into Staten Island. Let's, 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 why are we always wait for something to happen? Like Wagner High School happened almost exactly a year ago. There was short agents. After that moment happened, we got agents to that building. Why we have to be reactive? Let's start being proactive. Uh, so that was one of my issues too. Scanning, random scanning and unannouncing, I'm sorry, to me, doesn't work. Yes, they were, you were able to uh, uh, get some um, weapons from there. We need permanent scanning in these schools, permanent scannings in these schools, not just random scannings. Kids are not stupid. They know in random, the reason why you're not getting heavy weapons during random scanning is because they know that that's random scanning. The next day, an incident happening, happens, there's random scanning. We need to have permanent scanning in the schools. And how do we do that is the question. Why can't we have our local precincts? Why can't we have them rotate through our schools? You know, I don't know if Chief Laren could speak upon that. Like, why can't we have our local precincts and go to each school and have them rotate through the school to, to show the presence that there is a little intimidation factor that people won't come in. And I know the project pivot is out there. Project pivot is great. But why are we doing, why we, I mean, not project pivot, sorry, pilot program for locking the doors? Why is it a pilot program? Lock the doors. I mean, we have, we have the money. Don't say we don't have the money. I'm in budget meetings all the time on the C E C. There's money out there. Lock the doors. And if you can't do it, let's fundraise for it. I'm a PTA president too. I fundraised, I fundraised thirty thousand dollars for a sensory hallway for my school. I guarantee you I could fundraise money to, 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 to lock the doors for my school. Put it out there to your schools. Let's lock the doors and let's stop doing a, a, a pilot program about it. You know, and I understand, Kyan, you talked about, you know, there's no, you know, why isn't there any mass school shooting? But why do we have to wait for a mass school shooting to do something? This is, this is crazy. This is outside of Tottenville High School. You know, this is not like, you know, a, a, you know, a terrible part of Staten Island. You know, it's anywhere. Nobody's exempt from this stuff. It's out of control. And I want to also talk about, which nobody's talking about at all. It's a disciplinary code. It's severely flawed. These kids were fourteen, close to, and I know, nobody's apprehended yet. But these kids were fourteen-year-old kids, apparently, who are product of our school system. I would love to know what those kids' ORS reports look like for this whole, for, for their, for their school year. You know, the superintendent suspensions? That needs to change. These kids are getting super sent, there's no consequences for these kids. The, the superintendent suspensions, they go to the suspension sites. They're not even obligated to serve the suspension at the suspension site. They get a five, ten, thirty day vacation and they're back in the school. So we, that, that needs to change. So now it brings me into like, okay. And also, I refuse to be the dad from Parkland that goes to, that was on the news all the time, crying his eyes out because he lost his daughter. I've been trying to preach for this stuff for the longest time, and it's getting really out of control. And we need to really do something about it. It's, 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 so, okay, let me get off that for a second. So my thing is this, we need to get, these are great, Mona, and I love that you guys do these, but we need solutions. We need the right people in the right meeting. We need the U F T, U F T, CSA, two thirty seven, D A, the elected officials, the mayor's office, governor's office, parent advocates in a room to make a change. Because right now, we're all on soapboxes. That's what we're doing. We need to make true change. And how do we do that? And I will say that thing that bothered me most was a couple of weeks ago or a couple of months ago, I was invited to go to the mayor's town hall here on Staten Island uh, at the, in uh, in the J C C. And it was three hundred people in here and in the room. And everybody wanted to bring issues out. And it was out of three hundred people, not one person raised the school, raised a question about safety. Not one person out of three hundred people. For some reason, it's not prevalent. But you know what? This, you know what the problem is at Tottenville High School? It's just gonna be part of the news cycle. Once the news cycle's over, it's over with and it's done with. Then we'll move on to something else. We need true change. So I'm, I'm anxious to hear from the parents. Thank you, Mona.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Jimmy. I, I hear your concerns and that's what we hear for, and that's why we're doing what we're doing. And no one else has done what we're doing before us. So I hear you. And when that happens and that in-person meeting happens, it will be us just leading from the front as we are doing now. Um, I'm opening up the floor to parents who want to ask questions. Uh, parents, I, once I put you on as a panelist, you have to turn your camera on. If your camera is not on, you will not be allowed to ask a question. Okay? So we're going to start with the following. Um, who have their hands up? Uh, James Hunter, Camita Randall, Christopher Puglies, Dina Tester. We'll start with you. Please turn your cameras on if you want to ask a question.
Hi, good afternoon, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be a part of this meeting. Um, I heard uh, the statements made that um, we shouldn't have armed guards in our school to that a gun won't stop a, a, a school shooter. The person who's shooting, the, the person who may walk in and harm our kids and our staff will not stop because they have prayers and thoughts. A person, a law-abiding citizen, preferably an armed, excuse me, a trained armed security guard would be much more efficient than someone who is not armed. Is there any um, talk of, of getting trained security guards in our schools? Because I work in a school and I want to come home to my daughter. I want the students I work with to go home to their parents and their guardians. I want our staff to be safe. Everyone should be safe. And this idea that a person who was shooting up our people will not stop, excuse me, will not be stopped by a, a trained security officer, to me, does not make any logical sense. Thank you again for this time.
Thank you. Um, I will uh, put that hot potato with Chief Laren.
So the, the short answer to that question, unfortunately, i- is no. The city is not having that conversation to bring armed police officers into the school.
Not at all.
Or a private security force. Um, so there doesn't seem to be an appetite for that right now. What we're relying on is our communication system, our intelligence arm, and really our patrol officers and our emergency services unit officers to get there as fast as they can. Part of the training of the run height fight was that everyone is part of the response. So it's not just the first responders. It's the immediate responders, which are the people on the ground. There is something that everyone can do. So this is something that uh, the principal can get involved in to the lunch lady. Everyone can take proactive steps to slow down the threat. Uh, so unfortunately, the, the answer is no, sir. Not at this time.
Thank you, Chief Laren. Um, our next uh, parent is Camita Randall. Uh, Ms. Randall, if you could turn your camera on and ask your question of our panelists. Okay, I don't see her. So we're gonna continue on. Uh, Dina Tester. Oh, okay.
Hi, doing? So, okay, so my question is, um, recent, well, recently I have had the opportunity to take the uh, civilian academy police, civilian police academy course. And I wondered if, I wonder if some sort of cohort of that can be offered in the high school, maybe for like community service so that it can give students a better idea of how um, how to engage when there's different things that's happening in the school, like um, there's threats of violence and shootings and stuff like that. So I just wondered if that, if any thought was given to that.
So, so yeah, so part of this training, the active press training, involved Louisiana State University Training, the trainer. So some of our police officers and some members of the Department of Education, the Borough Safety Directors, they're certified as trainers. So if there is a school, a parent association group, if you would like for us to come out and speak to the group about what are the best steps to take in the event of something like this, we'd be happy to do that. Um, part of the training is that a conditioned response is better than a non-conditioned response. And our brains tend to deny what's happening in front of us if we're not acclimated or training for that. So meaning drills. We do a lot of fire drills. We do way more than we do active shooter drills. So the thinking has to shift in terms of that. But we'd be happy to do that. Uh, you can do it through, through either Ms. Davis or through Kyan Simkins and uh, we'll make sure that we have someone there to talk to the group.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Laren. And next parent, Dina Tester. Um, if you could please turn your camera on and ask your question. Okay, I don't see her. We'll continue on with, oh, okay, here we go.
Wait, it takes a while, sorry.
That's okay.
I just want to know, how, how is it determined how many safety agents go into a school? And how is it okay for one safety agent to cover thirteen hundred students? So it's like a twofold question. And who covers the safety agent when they go out, go out to lunch?
So thank you for your question. Um, so just in terms of numbers and just to put it in perspective, at the beginning of the meeting, I said we have three thousand two hundred and fifty-six agents that are boots on the ground, day in, day out. We have fourteen hundred buildings that we have to cover. So the math tells us that that's two point three agents per site. That's not an encouraging number. We acknowledge that. Unfortunately, we have no control over that right now. We have to shift the resources that we have as best as we can. This is taking into account things that happens with the agents. Agents, they're like all of us. We get sick. Uh, they have emergencies in the family. Um, they have children, childcare needs as well. So uh, the unfortunate part here is that it takes eighteen weeks to train up a qualified candidate to get them out. The class that we have right now, they won't come out till January sixth. So naturally, the, the large campuses should have double-digit numbers. And you're talking schools like Lehman, South Shore, Tottenville was mentioned earlier, has three thousand plus kids. You know, the only way to, to really solve that is to, the only way to get double-digit agents in schools that need it is to leave other schools with zero, which is not something that we're willing to do at this time. And right now, when an agent, if they're there by themselves, unfortunately, they have to rely on members of the administration to help cover them at the desk if they have to step away for whatever reason. So our borough commanders, our supervisors are working extremely hard to try to cover as much as they can. But, but, but it is an issue. It is an issue. I wish I could say I had a, a, a mass reserve force that we can deploy and shift around, but, but, but we don't. We have to rely on the intelligence and just put the agents out as smartly as we can.
Okay.
Mona, can I, can I add something to, to that? Um, and to, to the shortage of safety agents? Um, I know I mentioned a number of community-based organizations that are, are joining our efforts to Project Pivot. A number of them are, are organizations that are part of the mayor CMS network, the Crisis Management System network, and, and, and are individuals who are from organizations that could be considered violence interrupters and are assisting with the safe passage corridor. And so when you look at the Project Pivot schools, many of them are located on those large campuses uh, where there are a shortage of agents, um, and just multiple schools. And so we have enlisted the community um, to assist us with that, to ensuring that our, our children are safe. Um, and that will help uh, the agents with, to ensure that there is safe passage corridor for our students. So I just wanted to add that just because a couple of schools were mentioned. Um, and even Tottenville, right? Unfortunately, we had that incident take place yesterday. Um, but that is a site, right? That, that a, a number of organizations will be beginning programming uh, uh, to support the students. And I believe one of them uh, is True to Life, which is the Violence Interrupter Group uh, based in Staten Island. So I just wanted to add that for the parents so that they can uh, at least uh, experience some relief um, that, that we do have community organizations that are coming in to assist uh, with the shortage of, of agents. Yes, True to Life, yes.
Mona, you're muted.
Oh, thank you. Uh, the next parent is Craig Slutskin.
Thank you, Mona. My question, my question is, good to see you. My question is actually more directed to Councilmember Holden and Councilmember Ariola. On the safety agents and the number, what, what can we, this be addressed legislatively? We have class sizes, right? So you have to have one teacher per X amount of students. Why can't we have legislatively that every building has to have one agent per X amount of students or X amount of square feet? Why can't we have something like that? Because that would give the NYPD the, the requirement and the, and quite frankly, the gumption to actually hire more safety agents because they legally. To actually hire more safety agents because they legally would have to and have to do that. And before I get to that other question, I just want to, uh, something, jump on what something that Jimmy had said. I was at last night, the mayor's, uh, town hall in Manhattan. And I can tell you, it was amazing the way some people spoke. Someone at my table, who was a C E C member, C E C two member. So actually said that we should have, we have less safety agents. Because people, many kids don't feel safe when we do have N Y D, NYPD presence. And that attitude scared me and it scared a lot of people when I told them about that today. So I just wanted to mention that. So, but my question is, can we do something legislatively? And then I see, uh, Mr. Zeldin's online also.
Oh, okay. Uh, I'm gonna go look for where he is. Thank you for letting me know that.
Mona, I think he's on as a panelist.
Oh, there he is. Hey, everybody.
Welcome, welcome Congressman, uh, Zeldin. Uh, I see you in transit. Uh, I know you're hectic. Thank you so very much for joining us. You just heard a question from a parent, Craig Slutskin. Who's asking if we can, uh, you know, legislate, uh, when it comes to the number of school safety agents. Per a certain number of kids. But, uh, and I would like you to answer that question, but Congressman. We are experiencing a school safety crisis in New York City. We have the severe shortage of school safety agents. We have five guns found so far in New York City schools this year. We have over fifteen hundred weapons, uh, confiscated by school safety agents. And this is just about twice the amount as it was last year this time. So, parents are worried. Children are scared. We have shootings at dismissal. Congressman Zeldin, what's your plan? Um, you know, just, we want to know. What will you do? And also in answer to Craig's question. Because we need funding. We need funding for, uh, bulletproof vests for school safety agents. We need funding because we need more police officers on the street. We need funding because we need that mobile school safety task force to be outside providing safe corridors. So, I know it's a lot. Be as succinct as you can, but what can you do? What will you do?
Okay, then just, I, I think I came in, in the, uh, in the middle of Craig's question. So, I just, remind me, so what was Craig's question?
Craig, go ahead.
Sure, and it's nice to see you again, Congressman. Um, so my question was, what, we're, we're talking about, we were talking about before you got on. The lack of safe, the, the sheer number of safety agents, they just aren't enough. So for example, in my son's school. Uh, which is six floors, two, two schools within the school, we have one safety agent. So when she has to use the facilities. The parent coordinator becomes our safety agent when she has to take lunch. It's, she's not, the parent coordinator is a nice lady. She's just not qualified. And I think we're hearing from a lot of people here, there just aren't enough safety agents in the school. It's like Flushing High School has like two for three thousand kids. Can we legislate this, similar to how we legislate class sizes? That for every school, for every set, for every X amount of students, you have to have a certain amount of safety agents. Or for X amount of square feet in the building, you have to have certain s- uh, number of safety agents. Because that, having that legislatively would help the NYPD make the case for hiring more, getting more funds. For more safety agents, because they, quite frankly, they would be breaking the law if they didn't.
Yeah, so that's a great question. And, uh, I'm glad I asked you to, uh, to restate it because, uh, I, I wasn't on, uh, for the entire question earlier. So I, I do support having school resource officers. Uh, we have over seven hundred school districts across the state. All of our schools should have school resource officers. Uh, they need to be well-trained. Uh, they need to be well-equipped to be able to respond to all different kinds of circumstances. They need to have. Uh, the right working comms and relationship with local law enforcement. Uh, I support single point of, uh, entry. We have to be smart about how you do it. Um, and I'm talking about, uh, single point of entry. And you can look at particular hours of the, uh, hours of the day. Uh, where you can monitor multiple points of entry at a particular time when kids are coming into the school. And then you can go to single point of entry, uh, once the kids are in. It all depends on manpower. Um, it's, it, it's important for these school resource officers to, to have the equipment that they need. I know that's, you know, some, excuse me, it's somewhat controversial, um, but I believe that they should be trained armed, uh. School resource officers. I also think that, uh, our schools shouldn't be treated as a, uh, sanctu- uh, as a sanctuary where. Uh, you know, you have other forms of crimes. We talk about guns, yes, but there are knives, uh, there are drugs. Uh, uh, when you look at some of the laws of the state, whether it is raise the age. Uh, and some of the other more recent laws that were passed up in Albany, uh, I believe that, uh, that there needs to be a change. I don't support some of these new laws that have been passed up in Albany. I have pledged to suspend these laws. Uh, when I get there, I want to work with the legislature on better fixes. Uh, Eric Adams. The mayor of New York City is calling for amending raise the age, forgiving judges discretion away dangerousness on, on castle spell. So there's a few different fronts on this. Uh, the actual crimes, the illegal activity that happens inside of a school. We can't have people in the school thinking, okay, this is a sanctuary for crime. No, actually, the school needs to be a sanctuary for everybody else. To feel safe, uh, inside of the school. Uh, as, as far as being able to fund it, there are unfunded mandates right now, uh, up in Albany. And they also come out of Washington. They make it hard to be able to balance budgets. There's inconsistency in the state funding formula. There's, uh, unpredictability, not knowing how much schools are gonna get the next school year or the following school year after that. So as far as making those long-term decisions with staffing and other priorities, uh, that's a problem as well. So, uh, what I just mentioned was a few things, just to recap. Uh, I support single point of entry in the schools. Uh, I do understand from some who had, uh, some of these schools, they want to utilize their, their manpower. Uh, to be able to have multiple points of entry until the kids are inside of the school, and I get it. Uh, and for anyone who misunderstands what this proposal is, no, we're not talking about single point of exit. Uh, every school should have a school resource officer. They should be trained. Uh, they should be armed. Uh, there needs to be a good work and relationship with local law enforcement. Uh, we have to, that you want to mandate it, then pay for it. Uh, and, yeah, I'm happy to hear out anyone else's ideas on, on how to make it better. If the NYPD. Uh, if the Board of Education, if they come up with additional proposals, they need support from all. One of the points that was just mentioned was, uh, bullet, uh, I, I helped to. What's that?
Your, your audio, you were going in and out.
Uh, yeah, I apologize. I'm in the middle of nowhere. Uh, how am I right now?
That's, you, you, you sound good.
Okay, all right, yeah, apologize. We're, uh, driving across New York and, uh, one of the issues up here is broadband. Uh, so that we can have this conversation. That was an issue earlier when we called in. Uh, so the point about, uh, the bulletproof vests, uh, that's something that I've, uh, supported for law enforcement officers, uh, as a member of Congress. Uh, so I would support additional funding for, uh, bulletproof vests. Uh, what just took place, uh, by the way, what we saw in Staten Island was, it was absolutely tragic. If a fourteen-year-old innocence, um, victim, innocent family. Uh, they shouldn't have to fear for their own safety. My own sixteen-year-old daughter, just three Sundays ago, they were just sitting at home doing homework. Kitchen table when.
Congressman Zeldin, you're.
My house became the site of a drive-by gang-related shooting. Uh, so this is something that impacted. Yeah, I, I apologize. That, I don't know what to do.
Yeah, no.
You have a follow-up on any of that?
Um, yes, so, you know, just, uh, a, a follow-up question and a clarification. Um, you know, in New York City with our school safety agents, um, unlike the rest of the country. Uh, we're including, you know, the rest of New York State and the rest of the, the nation. Um, in New York City, our school safety agents are actually civil servants and they take a civil service exam. And this majority woman workforce, you know, they do not have bulletproof vests. And they are confiscating loaded firearms. So my question to you, Congressman Zeldin, is. You know, would you support and require that every school safety agent? Can we get and possibly an executive order from you? Uh, that every school safety agent, at the very least, has a bulletproof vest?
Um, so I, you, you actually cut out on my end. Uh, did you say, will I support, will I support then, if you could finish the question from there?
Yeah, we- we'll, can we count on your support in requiring that every school safety agent? Has a bulletproof vest? Because our school safety agents, a majority, uh, female workforce. Are out there in the schools confiscating loaded firearms. And they don't have bulletproof vests.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Hundred, hundred percent. I think that, uh, that, that, that shouldn't even require legislation. That should just be the way that it is. Um, I, I am someone who believes that all law enforcement should have all the tools and resources. They need to do their jobs, what you're. You know, speaking of, with some of our schools, the trained resource officer might not be law enforcement. They might not have the same level of training. Um, but it's, it's important that they all have access for that, for sure.
Thank you. And, um, for any of our panelists, if you have, if you may have a quick question. Or we can just continue on and, um, open the floor so that we can hear from, uh, parents. And Congressman Zeldin. Thank you so very much. Uh, Robin, looks like.
I see that Councilmember Bob Holden has his hand raised and I don't.
I'm sorry.
Or Lee Zeldin, or if that's for someone else. I just wanted to point that out.
Thanks, Robin. And then, and it's nice to see Lee Zeldin again. And I, you know, I can't believe he's already, uh, outside of Syracuse, or are you?
Yeah, I'm actually in Syracuse right now. I just came from Utica. I started my morning in Glendale.
Yes, we, we saw him this morning, uh, in, uh, my district. So I, I just want to say, uh, boy, you get around. So thank you, thank you for joining the, uh, certainly the call here. I, I think, uh, Craig, great idea. Uh, we're gonna explore that. I'll explore that with my colleague, Joanne Ariola. I think, uh, her hand is up. Um, and, uh, terrific idea. You know what? We did that in the last council. We actually had legislation that required the Department of Education to hire counselors for every school. They, they really haven't gotten there yet. They haven't reached the goal of having counselors in every school. So you could come up with legislation. But you also have to see that it's implemented the right way. But that, that's a great idea, Craig, and, uh. Uh, I think we'll, you know, we'll have that written up tomorrow, along with my colleagues on the call. To have, um, school safety officers. And I think, well, maybe we can work with this panel to say, um, and, and some of the experts here. Uh, how many should we have? Because I have some schools that don't have only one school safety agent. And by the way, school a- safety agents. Do more than just protect students. They connect with students. They're, you know, they're, they're parents sometimes. Uh, they're a friend, they're, um. Uh, they could tutor students. I mean, they could do so many things, uh, and they act like they're very friendly. They, I, I go in my schools and the school safety agents are wonderful resource. They just are a friendly face. You know, and they're counselors, they're everything. So, um, but Craig, yes, we'll do that. And, uh, Joanne, are you, uh, Ariola, are you in agreement?
I absolutely agree, Craig. Great, great question. And, and, and until we, we can get that legislation, we, Bob and I can really push it. The other council members, oh, and Congressman, thank you so much for coming on. But, um, and you're right. School safety agents need to have better treatment. School safety agents need better wages. School safety agents need bulletproof vests. Just like we need them for our, um, our emerg- EMS, all our first responders. And we can start to do that on, in a budgetary level when Bob and I and the rest of our council back in, talking about the budget for next year. To make sure that, that school safety agents are hiring at their budgeted levels. So many of our agencies are not hired at their budgeted levels. And that's why we're seeing such a depletion. And Queen, you had so many great points. I'm glad I had a chance to say again, I, I one hundred percent agree. And yes, locking the doors, I have a buzzer on, on my own door, we let everyone in, a- at, at our office. No one gets denied. But recently, this is another thing we're gonna talk about with the budget. Recently, we, uh, had a prototype of, of a, uh, kind of like the, uh. The metal detectors, Bob, if you remember. And it was very, it was, it was, it was so non-invasive and it wasn't threatening. It was kind of like a, a wave. That you just walk through. And it picked up any type of metal that a person had on. Well, we have to really get behind this, the school safety agents. And I think that you have people on this call today and in government that want to do that. And in, at John Adams, when two kids were stabbed outside of John Adams, they went into John Adams. For safety and it was the school safety agent that called nine-one-one and their lives were safe. So we have to do, we have to do better by our school safety agents with making sure they're up to their budgeted levels. Making sure that you do have the equipment to keep yourself safe and making sure that you're treated better with wages and, and, um, and benefits. And things that you are lacking now. And just, if, just to close out, Jimmy, you're right. We have to talk about the consequences that are happening inside the schools when kids are having all crimes. Right now, a kid who was beaten unmercifully was outside of the school. And they had, the, the kids who did it was on video because kids are videoing all the time. And, and when they, when they talk about a safety transfer, it's never to the child that ha- made the problem, it's the child that had the problem. So, you know, it's just unfair. So we have to really look at the consequences too. So we're gonna be working with you guys to make sure that the bigger picture is, is looked at and we're in agreement, a hundred percent. Thank you.
And, and, and Joanne, I might add that I have a lot of schools that don't have cameras. In and around the, the corridors around their school on the outside. And we need to really upgrade that and make sure. That the cameras are not that expensive anymore. So we can put enough cameras so we can see, you know, what the students are doing outside. You know, what's happening. And, and really, even, even a half a block away, we should be able to see what is happening, uh, around the school. So let, we're gonna work together, uh, based on some of the information today. It was, uh, it was terrific. And thank you again, uh. Congressman Zeldin, uh, for being on, and I appreciate that. But, um, this is a, a very productive call here. I, I think we got, we've gotten some good ideas already.
Yes, thank you. Um, and again, thank you to, uh, Congressman Zeldin for, for joining us. And, uh, you know, we will definitely follow up with him, um, you know, when it. If, if he is our next governor, we'll be knocking on the door, reminding him about this promise that he made. Um, so to.
Mona. Mona?
Uh, uh-huh. Yeah, I, yeah, I can hear you. I want to get our parents on. Uh, um, can you, can you, can you make your comment really, really brief? Because it's nine o'clock.
Mona, I just, I wanted to say, I wanted to echo what, uh, Councilmember Holden said about the, the safety agents being part of, not just protecting our children. But part of the family. At our, one of my schools, we had at one point twenty to forty percent of students in temporary housing. And after these items, teachers have arrived, we now have probably fifty to sixty percent of our children in temporary housing. And the safety agents are one of the, the constants in these kids' lives. Their teachers change each year, but these are, are people who sit in front. And who we all know by first name. We bring them snacks and treats and we think of them as, as family members. And to think of them as, as being paid unfairly, as not protected, as, as being criticized is, is unacceptable. And I wish we had more superintendents on here listening because they, they should go to their higher-ups and demand better treatment. Um, again, we, like you said, we need to do more, not just stand up in soapboxes, but we need to demand, um, this is not acceptable. And if any superintendents were on here tonight, I would demand our superintendent Kelly to do something about it. Because he does have the obligation to go to Wise Brigger Banks and to say, something needs to be done. I understand that we have different offices, but. Um, but, but we can make noise and we will be making noise. And I'd like to ask, um, Lee Zeldin, next time we have him. If he would require, uh, doors to be locked. I, I would like, just like to leave that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Um, we, um, I'm stopping at these last, uh, parents because they've been on here. So we have, um, Marissa Correo, Lisa Ann Catherine Baez, Diana Mentovai. Uh, Kimberly Ferraro, uh, and, uh, Janine Wallen. Um, we're parents, I'm going to bring you on. Please be very brief. Ask your question. Um, I'm asking all of the panelists just once again, because there's been a lot of. Ask your question. Um, I'm asking all of the panelists just once again, because there's been a lot in the chat, to please put your contact details for our parents uh in the chat so that, you know, it's, it's more recent. And um, you know, we're just going to finish up. Please bear with us. Thank you for your patience, both our parents and our panelists. Uh, but I want to let the parents ask the question. So um, Marissa, if you can uh turn on your camera, if you're still online. And then after that would be Lisa Ann and then Catherine Baez, and we'll continue and finish up. Marissa, if you're.
Yes, I'm coming on. I'm coming on. Sorry about that. So my first, I guess it's a two-part question also, but I'll make it quick. Who is the point person to find out the timeline? Everybody on here does not have a timeline for the locked doors. And like everyone is saying in the chat, I don't know what we're waiting for. So who has the timeline? Is it the mayor of the New York City? Is it the governor? Where can we get the timeline from? A common person doesn't know that answer.
Uh, Chief Laren and uh Mr. Barnett, that's your hot potato.
So I can tell you what I know, but uh without speaking for the DOE, because they are the agency that's financing this new intercom style system.
Okay, so it's an intercom?
Uh, yes, it, it is a, it's a intercom type system where you can speak. It has audio capability. It has a video capability. It's connected right to the front desk where the agent sits. It has keypad access and also key fob access for emergency situations. Right now, there are only three schools that have it.
Right, so crazy.
Right, uh PS twenty eight, uh Newcomers High School, which is also in Queens. Uh, there's a school in the Bronx on eight nine oh Caldwell Avenue. And the fourth is going to Staten Island that PS.
Right, PS eight, okay.
Yeah. That, that.
Who can we talk to about where's the timeline? Like, who, who is?
Right. Uh, unfortunately, I don't have that. It would have to be my counterpart, Mark Grandpercent over at the DOE.
Okay, can you put his name in the chat so I could uh have that information?
Sure, absolutely. Uh, but what I, what I can tell you is that it is user-friendly. Um, our agents so far have been able to, to employ it.
Of course, and we would fund it ourselves. My school would raise the money ourselves to get it, get it faster. But we have no one, we have no point person to talk to.
Okay.
So if you put their name in the chat, that would be great. And hopefully it's within the year, right? I hope it's not like a four-year plan. That's it. That's all I have. Thank you.
I understand. Thank you.
By the way, I could just jump in. I'll just answer part of that. Um, the mayor, the chancellor's office contacted uh me because I requested uh that we have the cameras and the um, the buzzer system. They are researching it. They said they are getting prices. They're just deciding on which camera and system. They want it all to be uniform. Uh, so they didn't give me a timeline. We don't know it. But let me just tell you one thing. I have one principal that took it upon herself to install this, this system uh over a year ago. And she did it from her own budget. So I, I think it's possible to just, if the, if the individual school wants to try it and the principal has the money, it's not expensive, put it in. I would just say, let's do it and not worry about the consequences. But I think there is, it's in the works. I don't expect it to be tomorrow, but uh I will let you, everyone know as soon as I get a uh, a final confirmation from the chancellor's office about the timeline.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Holden. Um, the next uh parent is Lisa Ann and then followed by Catherine Baez. Lisa Ann, if you're on, could you please turn your camera on? Okay, um, I don't see Lisa Ann. Uh, Catherine Baez, if you still want to ask your question, uh kindly turn your camera on. Okay, um, I don't see either of them. Uh, the next, next up is uh Diana and then Kimberly. So Diana Mentovai, please turn your camera on to ask your question. Diana, okay. Ah, there we go. Hi, Diana. Thank you for, for waiting. Please ask your question. And I see, and then Cat, then we'll go to Catherine Baez.
Hi, thank you. My question is about the pilot program for uh locking the doors. So my understanding is that a pilot program is like a trial where these four schools are going to get this buzzer system. And some kind of determination has to happen where, you know, the DOE decides, yes, this is a good idea and we want to do this for all of the schools. So my question is, what is the metric of success? What is the piece of data that you are looking for in this pilot program to make that determination that, yes, we are moving forward with locking the doors for all schools?
You, you know, Mona, can I, can I just jump in uh quickly? And, and obviously, um, my colleague, Mark Grandpercent. And, and thank you, Chief Laren, for putting in his information. I think all questions should be directly a- addressed to him around the, the door locking system. But the one thing that I can share with, with everyone, all of the parents on, on the line and, and my fellow panelists, is that this has been a major concern of the chancellor uh since the summer, right? We, we've had planning meetings uh since July to identify the proper system um in regards to the pilot. I, I, I don't think it's a question of if it's something that needs to happen at all schools. Uh, I believe it's really around, we just want to make sure that the system that we identify is one that uh, that works, that is effective, that is efficient, um, that will ensure that all of our, our students are, are kept safe and that if, in the event that there needs to be first responders that, that we uh, uh, have to come to a school to, to, to deal with a shooting, they are able to uh, uh, get into the school if needed. Um, these are all things that have to be explored, that have to be investigated. There are eighteen hundred schools, right? Obviously plus in New York City. And so before a rollout of this magnitude takes place, which is very expensive, uh, uh, from a system standpoint, we want to make sure that the system that we've identified is one that works, that is effective, and one that we know can be scaled up to ensure that it is at every school possible. And so it is something that's coming soon. I cannot tell you the exact timeline, but I can say uh, with, with, with all certainty that, that this is a top priority of the chancellor. Um, and it is uh, uh, something that we constantly have discussions around. And so you will get updates as soon as we are able to share them.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Um, Catherine, uh, could you please ask your question?
Hi, yes, good evening. Thank you for having me. Um, I think this um town hall is very informative. I'm a former citywide council on high schools, um, parent for the Bronx. I advocate more on school safety and I agree with Ms. Simpkins and with Jimmy. And I think we do need um permanent um metal detectors in these schools. And as parents also, you need to check the surroundings of your school. If you do pick up your kids, check the surrounding of the school and down the block going towards the transportation because you see a lot of stuff popping off and you'll know when something's going to happen. Like, my daughter went to um Lehman High School. That's a hot zone over there. You see a lot of, you know, I've gotten involved, you know, to separate the situation, but I think we need a lot of help. And I agree with everything what Ms. Simpkins says is, is straight down to the T. Like, if parents don't go around and observe and see what's going on, they're not going to know what school safety really does. And I appreciate them for always being there and they do go above and beyond for these kids. And sometimes the, um, students feel more safer with speaking to a school safety agent than the own, um, school administration. And I've witnessed it myself, so I can say it honestly. So I thank you for that. And I hope we can do more. And as a parent, I'm tired of these, um, parents burying their children for no reason. It's just sickening and the heart and something needs to give. Thank you so much.
One hundred percent, Catherine. I agree with you.
Okay, um, our uh next parent is Kimberly. Uh, Kimberly, if you can, please turn your camera on if you want to ask a question. Okay, I don't, okay, is she coming on? Okay, I don't see her. Uh, Jessica Schwartz, if you could please turn your camera on if you would like to ask a question.
Yeah, wow.
Okay, I see Kimberly. Uh, if you could please ask your question.
Okay, um, thank you very much. I'm a parent of a student at Tottenham High School. And so they're learning that there's four school safety agents for well over four thousand children. And obviously, vacations, time off, they wouldn't all be there necessarily every day. Are we getting more? Um, you know, in regards to incident yesterday, the agent that helped the, the young man, that was wonderful of him. But we just, in reality, need more agents. I, I want to know what's going to be done about this. You know, it's, it's not a safe situation.
So we had, we had additional resources there today, and you'll continue to see that in the immediate future, long term. Uh, unfortunately, we have to rely on the new classes of ages that are coming out to be able to supplement what was lost there at Tottenhamville and really every school throughout the city.
Okay, um, because the dismissal, when they lifted the, the lockdown yesterday, was total chaos. Honestly, we, we got no information. Is there any kind of system in place that when these things happen? We had no phone calls, no texts, nothing to let us know that they were going to be releasing the children. They herded them out, forced them away from the doors, down towards Highland Boulevard. There was still police activity all over. It, it wasn't a, it wasn't a good situation. I'm not blaming the school safety agents. I, I realize there's not enough of them, but it just.
No, I, I, I.
What happened to these situations? Shouldn't the parents be alerted of what's going on? Not afterwards?
Yes, and, and I honestly regret that, that everyone in that school community and the parents had to go through that. Um, I was there today. I met personally with the principal, with the assistant principals. I conferred with the borough commander, Shehe, and the precinct commander, Deputy Inspector Smirnov, just so that we can continue the conversation about overlaying our deployment. Because uh, for us, for school safety, Kuiyan mentioned this earlier, we had police officers under us, uh, well over one hundred cops. And we were able to supplement the deployment of the agents. And what, what was good about that was the handoff. If there was a large group of kids, Lehman was mentioned, our agents will see them out of the building and the officers would set up the school corridor up until their bus stop, their train station, as far as they can go for the crowd to just kind of disperse. Because we do know that when kids are together, um, that group mentality kicks in. And a kid that normally wouldn't commit an act of violence, all of a sudden is because they're emboldened by the crowd. Uh, we know that that's a thing, that's a factor. So we are relying on our partners on patrol at the precincts to have those safe corridors. I did see police officers there today, uh, in the afternoon. Um, excuse me, uh, but, but the plan really is to, to bring back the scanning. I know they have the equipment there to do the part-time scanning. So I spoke with the borough commander there. CEO Sherrod, the principal is asking for it. So that's something that we have to reintroduce. But uh, like with any scanning operation, we need to mobilize agents and make sure that they're there. Um, I'm sure you've seen it, the x-ray machine, the magnetometer, the handwands. It, it, it's pretty involved. So you need.
Police officer, I'm very familiar with all of that.
So there you go. So, so four agents alone wouldn't cut it. And what I told the CEO Sherrod and the principal was, if we stand up and when we stand up the scanning, we'll, we'll have to bring in agents from other sites. And uh, Brooklyn South is the closest. So.
That's a lot of kids to get in the doors with the scanners.
Right, right. And, and we have to get them in on time too, the class. We can't hold them up. So uh, that's something that we're looking at right now, redeploying resources from the next closest borough to help out Staten Island because they are suffering with attrition numbers as well, unfortunately.
I, I understand, you know, short term, as you said, we're having the extra help. But honestly, long term is my concern because I feel like two weeks from now, we're forgotten about again. And nobody's going to do anything a day after the shooting. None of the kids are coming back there a day after. Two weeks, two weeks from now, maybe.
No, I know. And, and I know that because today the attendance numbers were low. And that's unfortunate because that means that. Right, so the kids are scared, the parents are scared that they're going to be next. And uh, that, that's traumatic for the school community and the neighborhood. Um, you mentioned the alerting system. Uh, again, I can't speak uh, fully on this, but I know that the DOE is looking at an alert system for parents and educators to make sure that you're fully aware as to.
They were sent out yesterday without us being notified. It was horrendous.
Uh, it's, so, every school is different. Some send group emails, some do phone calls, some do text. So a- again, I can't speak specifically to that.
Something that should have been done before the lockdown was lifted.
But they are looking to streamline it. I can't say that. I just can't tell you when it's going to go live or, or the actual app that the DOE is going to use. But, but we support that. We believe that parents do need to know.
You know, I understand they're high school students, but you know, something, they're still kids. They're still our kids.
No, at one hundred percent. And, and you ask any of our agents that they're ours too, you know, um, we, we, we feel it deeply when they're hurt and something happens to them. So um, thank you for your concerns. They're, they're one hundred percent valid.
Mona, I just had, I just had one question, just to piggyback, if I could, so Staten Island.
One, one moment. I just, I just see if Mr. uh Barnett wants to comment on that. For me, I know that this is something that Chancellor Banks is uh working on. He has spoken about it, uh, having this notification system, um, and getting it rolled out because the School Safety Coalition, um, our working group has um met with him and we've raised this, you know, raised this issue. So I do know that um, this is something, and he's a former school safety agent, and he gets it more than most people. But uh, Mr. Barnett, I don't know if you have any additional information. And then Jimmy, we'll go to you for your comment, but keep it brief because we have a couple more parents and it's after nine.
Yeah, um, yeah, I don't have anything additional. Um, the only thing that I will say is, again, I, I am aware of the um, the system that is, is about to be launched. I, I know that that obviously is a little bit easier to, to uh, uh, implement uh system-wide as opposed to the door lock system. And, and so that is something that we are on the cusp of launching. And that is a system, again, to communicate with parents, right? So that we don't have a situation like this. And again, I'm just taking notes, uh, and comments on, from, from what everybody is saying that I will share with the chancellor, uh, which, which will reinforce um, uh, an initiative that he already uh, uh, expected to launch so that we don't have uh issues that took place yesterday. So I do apologize uh to, to that mother and the other parents that had to experience that.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Uh, Jimmy?
Very quick. I know that um, uh, Chief Marin said that, Laren said that we would, you know, wait for the class. But historically, Staten Island gets two to four agents out of every class. So can we guarantee that the, that Staten Island is going to receive at least fifteen to twenty agents that, that at the very least that we deserve? Because we always get two to four out of every class, no matter how big the class is.
Uh, I, I can't guarantee that number, but I can tell you that these decisions are made based on data. Uh, we have to look at the volume of crimes that are being recorded in and around the vicinity, the immediate vicinity of the school sites. And uh, as, as you know, Staten Island is on the lower rung when it comes to violent crimes. That doesn't mean that nothing is happening there. We know that it is. We know that there's gang activity. We know that schools are feuding with each other and we'll definitely look to do better than the two to four. But uh, fifteen to twenty, that's, that's a hard press. I, I couldn't guarantee that now on this call, unfortunately.
Uh, Kuiyan?
Um, yeah, Mona, real quick, I want to touch on something. Everybody's yelling about the locked doors and buzzers. But I think we're not realizing the fact that statistically, and Chief Larry will probably back me on this, the weapons that we're confiscating, we're confiscating from our own children. It's our children, one more time, who are bringing these weapons into the building, our own students. So locked doors and buzzers are not going to prevent our students from coming into the building because they're going to come into building because they're our students. One more time, I'm advocating for every school to have scanning. That's a no-brainer. It has to happen. End of discussion. That is, that, that's the end of that. And what I also wanted to speak about was the lack of respect for the school safety agent's position. And the comments that I'm seeing in the Q and A shows a lot to that because the disrespectful comments, out of control. And this is not just about Tottenhamville. I'm not taking away from what happened there yesterday because one more time, I am a parent, I'm as well as a school safety agent, and I see all New York City kids as our kids. But it's been happening in every borough, in every county in New York City. But it's been happening in every borough, in every county in New York City. And it's been going on for the past three years, since they raised the age and put these nonsensical bail reform laws and all these other to the left woke people laws that make no sense. Mr. Holden, if you're still in here, speak to your colleagues. Go speak to your people and let them know. Hello. You need to get with this movement.
My colleagues, my colleagues, many of them are anti-police. I am not either.
That's fine. And that is fine. It's not about police.
They wanted.
It's about law and order. We don't have.
I could speak to him, Tom, blue in the face.
There's no law and order. There is none. Until they restore law and order back to the land.
I voted. I voted against defunding.
All these things, one more time, until you bring back law and order and the people that legislatively make the laws, fix these nonsensical laws and stop bending backwards and pandering and, and giving into this loony, loony, these people, they lunacy, it's lunacy. Because our kids are dying.
We're on the same page. We're on the same.
And they're suffering. So people, listen, forget about writing whatever you want to write or raise money for a buzzer. One more time, get together and start getting some petitions going, so we can put these petitions.
There's nothing wrong with a buzzer or a camera. There's nothing wrong with that.
Until you come to the school.
Somebody from coming into the school.
You do our job, a school safety agent's job, and know what our job entails and what it is? The buzzer on the door, one more time, is not going to keep our own students, who are the people carrying the weapons, who are the perpetrators of the crimes in the streets, who are shooting our other children, who are the victims.
So you're not, you're not, you're not acknowledging that somebody can come into the school who wants to harm our kids. You're not acknowledging that.
At the end of the day, anything can happen to you at any given time.
And there's nothing wrong with a buzzer.
No matter where you are.
Period. Nothing wrong with a buzzer.
Agreed.
In and out of the building makes absolutely no sense. It doesn't. Because whenever you can buzz in.
These kids were, these kids were armed outside the school. These kids were armed outside the school. They could have walked into the school at any time.
Respect and support school safety, respect and support school safety agents.
Either way, Kyanne, you, you have some good ideas, but you're not the end-all, right?
Starting salary to get more school safety agents, hire more adequate numbers to make sure that there's appropriate proportion for what's in the building. I've said 2,000, 3,000.
This is for the parents. Can we let more parents speak, please?
Okay, Kyanne?
Kyanne, we're not, we're not disagreeing.
We're not disagreeing with you. Hold on, hold on. Okay, so Kyanne is very passionate about.
And, and we don't disagree with her. And I just want to say that Councilmember Holden did not vote for, for defunding the police. And in fact, when, this year with the new class, we, we restored the money that was taken from the previous budget to bring the police back to where they needed to be. So, so Kyanne was kind of preaching to the choir with us. The other thing is, this year, Councilmember Holden organized the Common Sense Caucus, which he co-chairs with Councilmember Barelli from Staten Island, and I'm proud to be a member of. So we agree, we 100% agree. And buzzers, they may not be the, the whole answer, but they are deterrents. Cameras may not be the whole answer, but it's a deterrent. Metal detectors, we need them in our schools. We have to have them in our schools. And those are the things that we fight for, common sense solutions, more safety agents, better paid safety agents, more well-respected safety agents, more NYPD. This is what Councilmember Holden and I fight for every single day. So we, we're, I'm proud to say that. We're not part of the woke community.
No, we, we, we know, we know Councilmember Holden very much. He's come out to our rallies and our press conferences. And he's been one of our stronger supporters in, you know, in this fight. Jessica, thank you for being so patient. Please ask your question. If you can unmute yourself and ask your question.
Yes, hi, everyone. It's not so much a question as, so I totally support the school safety agents. But I'm at PS340. When you walk into our building, you can't see the safety agent. If someone comes in with a gun, that's it, they're gone. And so it, it's not that I don't think when there's not a real problem, they're great. But for a real problem, for me personally, I just feel like it's a false sense of security. And everyone is trying to, you know, pull for safety agents and more safety agents, and I get it. But at the same point, if there is an AR rifle in our school, a safety agent without a gun is doing nothing. Second of all, if the locked door system works in private schools, why do the public schools have to test it out? They know it already works. And we're not saying lock the door from the inside, from the outside. And I think we're all willing to take the chance that if God forbid, there's a fire, a police could get in. They can use, they could have like key cards, they could have fobs. There's, there's something that could be done for everything if it wants to be done. But everything is so political now. And, you know, the money, like our school will raise the money. Why can't we raise up the own money? Are we allowed to raise money and have like a private guard stand outside our school? Like, I don't know, are we allowed to take it into our own hands?
No, so I can answer that, 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 that question with my 15-plus years as a parent leader in all different levels of parent involvement in the school. So, and then Mr. Bonnett and Chief Laren, but you know, we have this, this is a matter of safety. And we have the number one police force, not just in the nation, but in the country. And.
Right, oh, excuse me, Mona, just sorry, one more thing. And we have been told that this is not the NYPD, it was the dispatchers. But it, we had a call two weeks ago, a prank call. It took the officers 20 minutes to get to our building. 20 minutes.
Okay, you're in District 2. I think I heard something about that.
Yes, and now I under, you know, again, supposedly it's not the NYPD. But that's the one thing we do have going for us, that we do have the best police for, you know, for us in the entire country or world. And for it to take 20 minutes to get to a school, you know, I, again, I don't want to get emotional like I was on our last call, but you know, I'm a mom of a six-year-old and I, she's my life. I don't have a partner, I don't have another kid. And school is supposed to be the safest place for my child. Like, I give her in school, I don't want to have to leave school thinking, am I going to come back and pick up my kid dead or alive? Like, I'm from Florida. And I'm sure some of you love the way that state is run. But even in Florida, they lock their doors. A lot of them have metal detectors. My friends live in Westchester at public schools, they have locked doors. They're having a meeting about armed guards, like. I, I just, New York City, who has the most issues with, you know, terrorists and people going crazy, and we have the least security in our schools, but only public. New York City public schools has the absolute worst security. And everyone can say stuff here, like, we're looking into this, we're looking into that, but nothing is going to get done, how nothing is getting done. All they're doing is making excuses. Like, again, they have to test out the system for locking doors. Just go to every private school. Like, it makes no sense. And if they don't want to spend the money, then the schools can raise them, give us that option. But, you know, and I hate to bring up 9/11, but our country is not into preventative measures. If the, the fact that those cockpit doors anyone could have got into before 9/11 is, makes no sense. But something happened, so they had to change it. So why are we waiting for something to happen? Because I hate to say it, we're New York City, something is going to happen to a school. And, and it's just, it's sickening.
Jessica, I have to, I have to stop you.
That's fine. Can I just ask Bob Holden one question about, he mentioned that a principal put a buzzer or something in her school and it's been there for a year. So are we allowed to do that at schools if we pay for it? And does that mean the doors were locked?
Uh, Council, Councilman.
I think what, what he, what he said was, he might, might have just stepped away from his camera, that, that the teacher, the principal took it out of her own budget.
Right.
And put it there. And, and he, although it is not popular with the DOE, he's encouraged anyone who had a budget that couldn't meet that expectation could do the same.
Okay, now let me just ask you really quickly, if we have a buzzer, do the doors lock?
I have to stop you, because we want to get answers to your question and we can't continue going on like this. So I understand, I remember you from the CEC 2 School Safety Committee meeting, so I understand. But I want to get answers to your, to your questions, because I want us to have a hot stop at 9:30.
Okay.
So, okay, so just, you know, for our parents coming back to, why can't parents hire a security guard? Why can't parents pay for that? You know, it, it can't just be one school or one community that, you know, is in an affluent area and can raise the money. We cannot have that. They have to be, it has to be equitable. It shouldn't just be schools in Park Slope or in SoHo that are able to afford on their own to have a, a security guard, locked doors, and all of that. So in New York City, we have PTAs that raise hundreds of thousands to millions of dollars. I'm a former PA president, Title I chair, all of that SLT member. And I can tell you, in all the schools that my children have been, and I have two children, a 24-year-old and a 14-year-old in the Bronx, none of, none of the schools that even I was in a leadership position, we were able to raise more than $3,000 a year, and that was with photo money, with, with, you know, taking photos of the kids. So it can't just be one school community or one, you know, community of, of parents saying, okay, we're going to come together, we're going to raise the money. No. All children should be protected. And I think, you know, that's what we need to, we need to understand. So I'm gonna, you know, have Chief Laren and Mr. Bonnett perhaps respond to Jessica's concerns. Because like many parents, you can see she is genuinely afraid.
So, so yes, I'm aware of the incident that occurred on October 6th at 8:42 AM. The school was placed in shelter in. I cannot speak to the response time of the local precinct. I'm not exactly sure what happened there, but I do know that with the general response protocols with the shelter in, for those that don't know, that means that the threat is on the outside. So everything is locked. Nobody comes in or out. The staff and the students are free to move about the building inside until the threat is assessed, handled, vetted, approved or disproved. A complaint report was generated for making a terroristic threat. It was an unknown caller. But unfortunately, I don't have any more information. I did answer it out on the chat earlier. I, I would highly recommend to attend the Build the Block meeting for the local precinct or the community council meeting even. This is the 13th precinct. But I do have the school, 64 West 17th Street. Again, I said it earlier, our agents and the administrators, they know exactly when to call these commands into play and they do notify the staff members in the building. I just regret that it took that amount of time and, and that it affected you so deeply. Unfortunately, this happens more than you think throughout the city. And we get threats every day. I get a 24-hour recap every morning from our partners at the Intelligence Bureau. While I was on this call, I received a threat for a school in Queens. So what we do is we share this information and we always err on the side of caution. And we bring more resources. Again, our unannounced scanning operation is extremely important. It was said earlier that, that it doesn't yield much fruit. That is not true. That yields the most fruit, our unannounced scanning operation. The chancellor did ask us to do a cost analysis for scanning full-time at every middle school and every high school throughout the city. The price point is north of $30 million. So for the council members that are on the call, thank you for your support. I would just want to mention that, 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 that is the price, not just for the equipment, the hardware, the software, but also for the agents that would have to man or staff this equipment rather.
Thank you, Mr. Bonnett.
No, the only thing that I add in, in closing is I certainly hear and appreciate everyone's concerns tonight. You know, I, I like the parents on the line. I'm a parent of, of two, two young adults, myself, and, and when they were younger and they were of school age, I certainly was, was concerned about their safety as well. On the one thing that I can share, right, with, with full transparency, I know, I apologize, I wasn't able to give you a clear timeline on when the door locking system would, would be implemented, but I, I can confidently share with you all that the safety of our students and staff at our schools is top priority of our chancellor. That is something that he drills into us daily. He wants everything that we, every service we provide, every class that's taught, every engagement with young people and families to have safety for them at the forefront of, of everything that we do. And so I can, I can with extreme confidence, again, on behalf of the chancellor, let everyone know that we will continuously work hard to, to figure out solutions to ensure that all of our, our students across the city are safe.
Thank you. So I'd like to give our panelists who are here just an opportunity for a one-minute closing remark. Could be less as well, that's fine. But I want to also say thank you so very much to our parents for joining us here, to our panelists. And we'll just start off with closing remarks. Councilwoman Ariola, if you could start us off.
Thank you so much, Ms. Davis. I, I, I come on a lot of Zoom calls and I'm part of a lot of panels. And this is one of the most spirited, interactive, informational and enlightening panels that I have been on in the 10 months now that I have been a council member. And I really, I applaud all of the people who have, were part of organizing it and, and the panelists that, that attended in the DOE and, and our school safety agents. Every word was heard. Every idea has resonated. And we're going to take all these ideas back. We work very closely with the chancellor's office. We work very closely with the NYPD, with school safety. And we want to make sure that every school has everything it needs to make sure our students are, are safe. My children are grown, but I have grandchildren, a 16-year-old and I have seven-year-old twins. And I hold my breath when I drop them off in the morning. I'm blessed to do that. But I just pray that they're safe for the rest of the day. And, and that shouldn't be, because when my mother dropped me off at school, she was, she was confident that I would be safe for the rest of the day. And, and we just have to do everything we can. And if that's locking doors, if that's buzzer systems, and we have to cut through a lot of red tape, we can't wait. We have to make sure that the funding is available now. $30 million is a lot of money. We spend a lot of money foolishly in this city and we can earmark it much better. And when it comes to the safety of the kids, there's no better investment we can make. And again, we're part of the Common Sense Caucus. We are 100% behind the measures that we spoke about tonight, Councilmember Holden and myself. Councilmember Palladino, who has her chief of staff on this call the entire time. We, we work with our principals, we work with our district superintendents, and we will work with each and every one of you to make sure that the things that we discussed tonight become a reality, not way down the road, but now, because that's really when it's needed. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. Amazing, amazing panel session.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Elisa?
Thank you so much for having me this evening. If I had one thing to say at the end of this to wrap it up, I encourage every parent that's here tonight who's concerned about the safety of their children in school, to get out there and get engaged and volunteer. Run for your SLT, run for your PTA, run for your local CEC, show up, show up at those meetings. Show up at any forum you can. Go to the pep meeting. You have a two-minute window every month to talk about what's on your mind. And then the more that people do that and the more that they ask those questions over and over again, that's when the money will come. Because when there's enough outcry, listen, I attended in 2019 the changes on that behavioral code parent engagement. There was hardly anybody there. At the DOE, they sometimes put these engagements in neighborhoods people can't get to easily on weekends like 4th of July, when people. in neighborhoods people can't get to easily on weekends like Fourth of July when people aren't around. And that's what you've got to keep an eye out for. When, when there's a family engagement event happening, make sure that you attend. And now that they're virtual, they're even easier to attend. So I just want to say thank you so much for coming tonight and, and for asking the questions, the hard questions, and thank you to all the panelists also for taking the time out. And I thank you so much, Mona, for having me. Oh, and Karen Wang is here tonight. She's the president of the C C H S. We will be working on a safety resolution from the C C H S. So keep an eye out for that and we will put some of these recommendations in there. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, thank you, Elisa. I've been reading Karen's comments and I'm also just, I think she said there's like four school safety agents at Cardoza that has over three thousand kids. So, you know, you know, this is citywide. Jimmy, your closing, closing remarks, please?
Thank you. Mona, I just want to say thank you as always for putting this together. It's always great. Like, you know, you always to have people of, you know, significance bring in, you know, some answers our questions. We do get passionate sometimes. Sometimes we do get loud, but it's all just at a heart, you know. We just want to see the right change and, you know, Joanne and everybody like all your sentiments is great. We appreciate the work that you're doing and we'd love to, I'd love to you know, reach out to you, collaborate a little bit, you know, on the P T A side of it, get parents together and, and get that group together that we need to try to really get that in there, get, get, get some change. And Mona, the work you do is just appreciative. And I just want to, uh, kind of Chief Laren, if we're in that Q and A, all night long, he was answering questions. So I just saw that. So I, I just want to give you a shout out. So thank you for all the hard work you're doing and please be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're going to go to Mr. Barnett, your closing remarks, sir?
Well, I just want to echo what, what, what Ms. Ariola said, that, that this being my very first public forum and, and panel discussion with, with my esteemed colleagues here, it's been a pleasure. I certainly hope that I am, I'm welcome back to, to give progress and updates on how Project Pivot is doing because though it is not on the level of, of the work that our agents do and NYPD does, those prevented, those preventative programs that we want to implement into, to our schools also help. And so again, thank you again for inviting me and allowing me to be a part of this conversation. And just again, just one last thing I want to say is just that to ensure the safety of our, of our young people, it is a collective effort, right? It involves students, parents, educators, the community, electeds, leadership. We all play our part and play a role in ensuring that our children stay safe in school. So thank you all for having me.
Thank you. And Chief Laren, your closing remarks?
I just wanted to say thank you for everyone, for everyone on the call and for allowing me to serve as the commanding officer of School Safety Division, parents, guardians, stakeholders, and so my agents. Just God bless everyone and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Laren. My closing remarks are very brief. Look, parents, we know we are all very afraid and we know what's going on. But what I would do is I would encourage the parents who are on this call, who are on the Zoom in this town hall meeting with all of your concerns to please, you know, join the School Safety Coalition. We've been around, we've been advocating, we've been fighting to ensure that all New York City students are safe, no matter the community, because no community is immune to violence, especially violence in and around our schools. Please visit the School Safety Coalition website at NYCSchoolSafetyCoalition.com. When we call you and when we, or when we put out a flyer and say we're having a press conference or we're having a rally, look, come out. Come out and join us because these are your children. But we've been out here, we've been fighting, we've been advocating, we stopped, you know, the move from, you know, school safety agents being under the purview of the NYPD and, you know, the move to try to put them under the DOE. We were fortunate, we have a chancellor and a mayor who understand how precious our children are and who will not falter when it comes to ensuring that school safety agents remain in our schools. So parents, community members, we need your support. You know, we need to speak as one. This is a collective effort. So come out, sign up for our newsletter, share the information, join the School Safety Coalition because we are all in this together. Again, no community is immune to gun violence. And again, to our panelists, Chief Laren, you know, you are rock star to us. We love you so, so much. You know, Councilmember Bob Holden, I don't know if he's still on there, but he's also a trooper and he is there and he has our back all the time. Councilwoman Ariola, it's such a pleasure to meet you and I look forward to working together with you. I'll definitely be knocking on your door.
Forward to it.
Mr. Barnett, you as well. It's a pleasure to meet you. We hope that Project Pivot is rolled out in even more school communities. You know, we support what you are trying to do. And Elisa, thank you so very much to you and to Karen for all that you guys are doing on C C H S. And to Robin, who's off from Community Education Council District Two for all the work that she is doing with their School Safety Committee. And to all of our parents, thank you again for joining us and please feel free to reach out to the School Safety Coalition. Everyone be well and God bless. Thank you.
Thank you.